Yes, Mayor. Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protam Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, and welcome everyone to the April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Ojai City Council. Will you please say the pledge for us, Will?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Okay, no commission reports and no presentations, so we will go on to public communication. And just a reminder to everyone, these are items that are not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation, and we can agendize them for the future. So we'll begin with Ula Levitt, and then Arianna Masiyas. Said that wrong, didn't I? Masiyas. Okay. And Alula Alderson.
Hello, my name is Ula Levitt, and I'm a senior at Oak Grove School, and I've lived in Ojai my whole life. I'm also a member of the Ojai Mayor's Youth Council. I'm here to talk about the plastic problem in Ojai. Plastics have been shown to be in our water supply, are a hazard, and if we do not act now, it will only get worse. It came to my attention that in two thousand and fourteen, the city of Ojai passed the ordinance number eight hundred and seventeen to stop single-use plastic bags in grocery stores and liquor stores. I noticed that grocery stores are using plastic bags again. I found out that stores in Ojai are allowed to use thicker plastic bags that are at least two and one quarter mils thick. I'm afraid that this is a loophole that stores are using to continue providing plastic bags. They are intended to be used multiple times. Unfortunately, not many people I've noticed actually reuse a plastic bag more than once, so this causes more plastic waste than before. The extra plastic causes there to be a greater number of microplastics in our environment as they contaminate our soil, water, and food. I would like to mention that Westridge stopped giving out plastic bags excluding meat and produce, and that seems to be working well for them, whereas Vons continues to use thick plastic bags. This loophole is even of concern to the state. In two thousand and fourteen, California as a whole also decided to transition to thicker plastic bags, and the state as well noticed a huge increase of plastic waste. In two thousand and fourteen, California threw away three hundred and fifteen million pounds of plastic bags, while in two thousand and twenty-two, California threw away four hundred and sixty-two million pounds of plastic bags. That's a huge increase for a law that was supposed to reduce the amount of plastic in landfills. I am urging the city council to really take this seriously and to make others aware of this issue. Here are my three solutions that I propose. The first is for the city council to add this to the agenda and further clarify the ordinance eight hundred and seventeen to include all plastic bags. The second is to investigate why stores still use thicker plastic bags and work with them to find a solution. And lastly, anyone here that is listening in, please do not use these bags, bring your own paper or cloth bags. I am very passionate about this, and I'm asking the city council to put an end to this plastic bag problem once and for all. This is so important for my future and everyone else's. The environment is counting on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ula. Next, we have Arianna, and then Alula, and then Leanna McNeely.
Hello, council. My name is Arianna. I'm a junior at Oak Grove, and I'm a member of the Mayor's Youth Council. I am urging you to stop the usage of rodenticides in Ojai. Rodenticides are being sold in local stores which give people easy access to purchase these toxic chemicals. These easily attainable chemicals make their way into the raptor population, which threatens the ecosystem. According to the Ojai Raptor Center, rodenticides have been a detrimental impact on raptors. Rodenticides are poison that do not kill animals immediately, rather it makes them weak and slow before they die, which makes them easy prey. A family of barn owls are approximately six, which can consume up to four thousand rodents in the span of their four-month breeding cycle. In efforts to solve a rodent population in the Nordoff Bleachers, the Green Valley Project was able to install two owl boxes and help raise awareness of the positive impact they could have on their campus. Also, in many instances, our pets are also being affected by the infected rodents, which can induce vomiting and diarrhea. This puts in risk their well-being and safety. We must be able to solve this problem and protect our natural ecosystem. So here are some things I propose. We must help support the health of our raptors and use our local resources, our natural resources, to help maintain a healthy wildlife cycle, because raptors are nature's rodenticides. This will also help maintain a balance within the rodent population. Another solution for public areas is the council must pass a mandate to cover the trash cans through the city with lids so that rodents don't become more populated in areas where people leave their trash. I encourage the community to also build owl boxes and pick up after themselves to stop the population, the rodent population, and continue to encourage the well-being of our wildlife and its preservation. Lastly, I urge the council to ban all sales of rodenticides in the Ojai Valley, because this will encourage people to look for alternatives to rodenticides. The youth cares about the environment, and I care about its well-being, so I urge the council to preserve our sacred ecosystem and support the ban of rodenticides. Thank you.
Thank you, Arianna. Next, we have Alula, and then Leanna, and then Dan McLaughlin.
Hello. This feather belonged to an owl that died here in Ojai from consuming rodenticide. Hello, my name is Alula Alderson. I'm a senior at Ojai Valley School and a member of the Ojai Mayor's Youth Council. Today, like Arianna, I would like to talk to you about the use of rodenticide in the Ojai Valley, which is a subject I feel passionately about as an animal lover and environmentalist. Often, rodents will need to consume rodenticide multiple times before the poison takes effect, as they've developed some immunity. Not only can rodenticide be ineffective, but it's also extremely inhumane. When the poison does work as intended, rodents suffer from uncontrollable internal bleeding and die in agonizing death, lasting anywhere between a couple of hours to several days. During this timeframe, the rodents grow lethargic, becoming easy targets for raptors and other predators, and once dead, may be consumed by scavenger birds. In this way, rodenticide works its way up the food chain, killing owls like this one, hawks, eagles, snakes, coyotes, and mountain lions. A study performed by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife found ninety-five percent of mountain lion carcasses in the state contain traces of this poison in their systems. One of the greatest concerns of my age group is climate change. Rodenticide is a small but significant factor in this larger issue because it's responsible for great biodiversity loss. Overall, rodenticide usage is often ineffective, cruel, and harmful for the environment. Recognizing this, the Ojai City Council passed a resolution ten years ago to discourage the sale, purchase, and use of anticoagulant rodenticides, but clearly not much has changed. Stores in Ojai, including Wachter's Hay and Grain, continue to sell rodenticide, and residents continue to purchase and use it. I urge the city council to put this topic on the agenda for a future meeting and consider the following actions. One, educate the community about the dangers of rodenticide. Two, encourage residents to remove rodent attractants and use traps and other devices rather than turn to rodenticide. Three, install raptor boxes throughout the city to naturally exterminate rodents. And four, pass a new ordinance that goes one step further than discouraging rodenticide and bans it altogether. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alula. Next, we have Leanna, and then Dan, and then Rachel Hunt.
Good evening. My name's Leanna McNeely, and I'm a member of Better Solutions for Ojai, which is a group of sixty-plus neighbors who are affected by the encampment on the City Hall campus. We'd like to express our gratitude for the engagement with our group by Mayor Stix, Councilwoman Souza Francina, Chief of Police Trina Newman, and Ben Harvey. The fact that you all took time from your busy schedules to meet with us shows your commitment to continued engagement. With our new city manager, we've seen positive action in confronting Ojai's homeless issues in ways that are sensible and compassionate. While the efforts made managing the encampment are appreciated, those of us living in proximity to it continue to experience disruptions to the quiet enjoyment of our homes. We understand that the city administration recognizes the current site of the encampment is not only not ideal, but highly detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as to the city employees who work next to it. We hope that all council members also recognize this fact, and we urge the council to publicly acknowledge the negative impacts to those neighborhoods in proximity to the encampment. The two thousand and twenty-four Point in Time survey has been published. Ojai has seen an increase of sixteen people identified as unhoused from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, an increase of forty-two percent, and we know there are many more who were not captured in that survey. Any solution for the unhoused in our valley needs to consider the increasing needs for housing and services. We are thrilled that the encampment resolution grant has been awarded in the full amount requested. We see this money as a means to locate and procure an appropriate alternate site to the encampment, one which will better serve the campers and one which will not impact residential neighborhoods. While the search for an alternate site continues, we're hopeful the city administration and council members move forward with a detailed plan for the long-term sustainability of the housing project, as this is a need which will only increase in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanna. Next, we have Dan McLaughlin, then Rachel Hunt, and then Delaney Labar.
Good evening. My name's Dan McLaughlin. I have a concern that I've been trying to work out for probably a year, dealing with the thirty-three proposal that you're looking at for going out for contract. There's a section of the road that I came in roughly nine months ago and talked to Public Works that deals with.
Point of origin, Mayor, that's on the agenda.
Swannor Group is.
Just, I'm sorry, Dan, that's on the agenda tonight?
It's, I'm not talking about things that are on, it's just a part of the roadway, not the contract.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Hopefully I'll be done. Anyway, so I came in today and talked to Public Works staff, and they said, the project is a done deal, which I understand you have to go to the city manager. I said, well, he's probably got a lot on his plate, he's not going to want to be too concerned with this, but it's the facilities, the Clinicus and Swannor Group and medical facilities, and all the retail, Crocker Bank, or Chase Bank, excuse me. It's a double-yellow line from Correo.
I think this is actually on the ATP. Can you wait? It's on, it's agenda.
Actually, I can't, I have another meeting I have to go to.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry, Dan.
Anyway, it's something somebody should look at, because.
You can send us a letter also.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Rachel Hunt, Delaney Labar, and then Star Child. Okay. Thanks, Delaney.
Good evening, Delaney Labar, two oh six South Blanche. As someone who lives down the block from the Kent Hall Encampment, I want to give a shout-out of congratulations to the city and all the people who worked on that grant. Heck, yeah. But also the efforts they've made to get people off the ground in these really cold, wet, winter days. Along, and additionally, and perhaps most important, is digging into a plan for a strategy for the future. Ben Harvey, as Leanna mentioned, Ben Harvey and Mayor Stix, and Councilwoman Souza, and Trina, Sheriff, all met with us, and that really makes such a difference when you get that kind of city response. So I really want to thank you for your time in meeting with us and discussing where we were in all of this. So I really think the grant will move us forward. It's, that was no small feat, winning that. I've been in the grant world. And I did some research into Dignity Moves, who's the organization that's looking to do a more long-lasting project than the temporary tents out here. And I think their template, yes, they build rowhouses of single, modest, single rooms, they have showers and bathrooms and laundry facilities and the things like that that you would want. They have security and fencing, all of which are really helpful, so there isn't a lot of ingress and egress all the hours of the day or night. But equally as important are the social services and mental health services that they bring to the community, so that you can really start to build something and help people get up and out and into more permanent housing. So I just want to say, I know other sites will be considered, I'm eager to hear what comes next, I'm patient enough to wait and see what you can do here, and kudos to everyone, and thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Delaney. Next, we have Rachel Hunt, and then Star Child, and then David Chapman.
Do I start? Hi, I'm Rachel Hunt, and I'm speaking to you as a lifelong community member here, third generation, and also a member of the Cherokee Nation and granddaughter of a woman named Nanyihi, who was one of the daughters of the American Revolution. So first off, I want to say that I'm really thankful to Jennifer Harkley from the Ventura Continuum of Care and all the work she put towards, with this grant. And I'm thankful that even if the smallest percentage of it is used for another toilet, which is needed, that's a celebration. But I'm here to make a semi-proposal to have something agendized, I think it's called. So I'm proposing for seven million dollars of the grant to be allocated for a beloved Ojai, beloved elder, women and children tiny home village. This would be a project of profound compassion that would offer a healthy, stable living space for families to be able to stay together and individuals to continue on with community connections already established, such as work or finishing school. In an integrated system where the younger women could help take care of the aging elders who are going to need daily care support as they age and already are. The elders can act as surrogate grandparents to the children around or for their biological grandchildren that are currently facing being unhoused in the next month. And we could all care for the native plants, growing food for us and the greater community in a holistic regenerative model. This would be a long-term solution for part of our current encampment that would also create a space for women to heal from CPTSD and generational trauma that frequently comes with growing up, living in poverty, and provide some protections from vulnerable women at risk of trafficking, drug exposure, and other compromising situations living on the streets put women and children in. Furthermore, this would be a gesture of reconciliation and retribution with respect toward that this city has made a profit off of removing indigenous people from their homelands and stopping more current indigenous people from having to be continually relocated, like my Cherokee ancestors were in the Indian Removal Act on the Trail of Tears to Oklahoma and into reservations that were in poor conditions, almost inhabitable, and stripping them from their culture, like other tribes such as the Tumash here that suffered a similar fate, and the current longtime natives now in our local refuge crisis. This would all be a financially more responsible path when looking at the cost incurred of mitigating encampments with expenditures and continuing to replace tents, rent toilets, get cleanup crews, security, and provide access to clean water, food, and other resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Star Child, then David Chapman, and then Anita Cram.
Hello, good evening. I want to speak a little bit about the last city council meeting. I, like Souza Francina, was very affected by the meeting, and I just wanted to explain a little bit my emotions around it. The first thing I want to say is that I was very grateful for Ben Harvey, for his words of calm and reconciliation. I think one of the best things that this council did was to appoint Mr. Harvey, city manager, and you did that all together, and I commend you for it. I remember before his words there, the mayor gave an explanation of why she didn't want to meet with the Planning Commission nomination committee of Councilmember Rule and Chair Quilisi. And that, that explanation really affected me, not only because I felt a lot of empathy for Councilmember Rule, but also I felt a bit of disenfranchisement myself, and I just wanted to explain why. When I re-watched the mayor's words about Councilmember Rule, I thought if she would ever want to list all of the faults that I have, she would have to call a special meeting, because in order to finish before midnight, it would probably take that long. The mayor did list out about a minute of some of the faults that Leslie Rule has, and I just wanted to supplement them with some of the opinions and things I noticed about her. Leslie Rule's been my council member ever since I moved to Ojai, and I first talked to her in opposition to the ceasefire resolution. We started out, actually, in disagreement about something, and I found that she listened empathetically, responded to my emails, and I felt very well-heard and very well-represented by her. Two things that I noticed about her is her courage and also her integrity. And I think if the mayor and everybody can remember some of the best things about the people we work with, it makes it a lot easier to work with them, it makes it a lot easier to unite the city, heal some of the divides, it makes it a lot easier to represent the whole city, because as a constituent of Leslie Rule's district, if Leslie's not part of the commission, planning commission selection group, then I can't be represented. And I think that part of giving this city the government that we deserve is making sure that we're all represented, and I urge the mayor and council to work with unity and to keep that in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Next, we have David Chapman, and then Anita Cram.
Hello, council. David Chapman, I live on South Blanche, just down the road, and am part of Better Solutions for Ojai Group. Thank you, Mayor, and council and administrative staff for all your ongoing efforts for the homeless encampment here at City Hall. I and Better Solutions for Ojai were very pleased to hear that the encampment resolution funding program grant was successful, and the city was awarded the full amount applied for Well Done, including the four cents. Thanks also due to Ventura County's Jennifer Harkley, who wrote and put together the grant. This grant sets the stage for the completion of the temporary unhoused encampment project outside and provides future funding for the permanent supportive housing units, along with full support services as specified in the grant. I and my group support the search for a more suitable site that better meets the needs of the unhoused and is located away from residential neighborhoods. We look forward to the restoration of the green areas once all campers have been moved into the city-provided tents. On another note, the Supreme Court's oral arguments on the grant pass versus Johnson yesterday reflected on the complexity of the homelessness in our country. While many towns and cities have a much larger challenge than Ojai does, we here have the opportunity to provide an acceptable managed solution that provides permanent shelter, safety, and support services for our unhoused community in a location that does not impact neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Anita Cram.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the earth. As you know, yesterday was Earth Day, and I would like to remind of all of us here in Ojai where we live, on the edge of wilderness. It surrounds us. As a town, we are wildlife corridor. Mountain lions have roamed this landscape for over six million years. The pigeons, the scrub jays, woodpeckers, hummingbirds, flycatchers, vultures, and our lizard friends date back to the days of the dinosaurs. Living relics surviving for millions of years. It's not about the notion of us sharing the landscape with them, it is the fact that they are sharing it with us. We are in a wildlife interface every day, an ancient web of life that is really hard to fathom when you pause for a moment to think deeply about our presence in this delicate work of art. The earth is abundant, it's verdant, it's teeming with life. Don't let anybody tell you that anything other than that is abundance. It's not about money, it's not about houses, it's not about cars, it's not about junk. Too often, we humans want more than, excuse me, too often, we humans want more, far more, than our share of what we actually need to thrive. We can be conscious stewards of the earth, and I believe we're the only species who is capable of being a conscious steward of the earth. Complex ecosystems that millions of years it took to get to today. We may be the sole species that is capable of this responsibility that needs to be taken with utmost seriousness. We are close to messing this up for all of the life that lives with us. So ask yourself, when is enough enough? Why do you always need more? How about just reveling in the beauty of nature and everything that is around us and taking care of our community members? Why is it so important to monetize housing, food? These are things that people should just be able to have. It's not a lot to ask, money doesn't buy happiness, we've heard that a lot, but it's quite true. It only feeds a need for more. So please, I believe in Ojai, I believe in our community, I believe we're capable of this. Let's honor the wildlife that we live with and the earth. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Any comments online, Will?
We have no comments online, Mayor.
All right. All right, thank you. Well, we will move on to the consent calendar. I would like to pull item I and put it at the end of the agenda. I know that we have a very packed agenda, and we need to keep moving, and a lot of the items are time-sensitive. Anybody else? Nope? Okay, is there a motion to approve consent?
I'll make a motion to approve that we pull item I and approve the rest.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. All right, we will move on to discussion, item number two, five-year proposed capital improvement program. And we have a staff report. Yes? Thank you.
So, can I have the next slide? I have it. Thank you. Next slide, please. Let's see what's happening. There we go. So I'm going to start here, and tonight I am going to take you on a journey of knowledge and everything that, about capital improvement programs. I'm going to define it for you, I'm going to tell you how we arrive at projects, and this is, this is a Q and A, too. I would welcome any questions along the way. I don't expect you to ask the questions at the end or hold your questions, so feel free to jump in if you have any questions. So you have in your packet tonight, you have a colorful table, and that is just a summary. We also have, which I didn't include because I didn't want to overwhelm you with information right now, although it's available, actually I have some copies back here, but the summary sheet that you have includes all of the projects in our, the city's five-year plan. So it's year one starting July first and going the next four years after that. So the costs are there, the projects are there, and the timing. Year one of this plan, there's been a lot of discussion in the industry about whether or not a CIP is a, is a planning document or a budget document. Well, year one of the CIP is the basis for the budget, so without any revisions to it tonight, but I would welcome any suggestions, revisions, questions, et cetera, that will become year one of the budget for the capital improvement program. So, so what is a CIP project, people ask all the time? It's quite simply, it builds, next slide, please. It builds, improves, or preserves a city asset, a fixed asset. So in the past, you've seen, in the CIP, there have been capital purchases, but not necessarily a capital project. Those are now being removed and putting into a different area in the budget, so I just want you to know that. You might see some things, or not see some things that you're used to seeing, for example, a vehicle purchase, and we'll talk about those later. The other criteria is generally the cost, the value. It's usually in excess of fifty thousand dollars. You will see a couple- You will see a couple of projects in here that are under because they meet the first definition. They're building, improving, or preserving a city fixed asset. So the way staff... And this is also a draft document, just so you know. But so the way that staff puts together this document, this program, we first look at health and safety. Those are the first things that we try to take care of in this plan. We also look at city council goals and objectives and direction. Those come into play. And asset preservation and extension of life, useful life, for example, roadways, et cetera. We look at regulatory requirements and new or expanded services. And we see that going on right now. You know, we're talking tonight about this unhoused project. That's a new expanded services that we're creating for the city. So one... Next slide, please. So an overview of this program that you are seeing tonight. And if I start seeing glazed eyes, I'll kind of talk even faster. And again, feel free to jump in if I'm moving too quickly. But in this document, we are looking at the first year is an eight... Or the first year has 25 projects and to the tune of about $8 million. That's before the unhoused project. So now you can add another 13 million to that figure. This was... We put this slideshow together before we got the grant, so here we are. And same thing with... So the total five years is about 63 projects and about 30 million, about 40, 43 now. So we have 16 new projects. And we go back to the prior slide, and that is staff has looked at some of the facilities that need upgrades. Oh. Next slide? Stay there. So we've looked at some projects out there in the city, in the community, and we have added 16 new projects that you've never seen before. So they weren't in last year's CIP or prior years. We have 16 projects that are in closeout. And how we define a closeout in this program, it's either a project we've completed this year or a project that we are due to complete before the end of the fiscal year, the current year. So before June 30th. So there's still some underway. Suzo, the bus shelters, one of them. It will be in a closeout phase because we expect it to be done. So... And there's seven projects that we just continue to work on. Questions? No questions. Next slide, please. So the CIP implementation. So we are here and we are now. We are at the city council review of the five-year CIP. This, again, this document will be adopted. It is a document, and it's also a budget document. It will be adopted with the budget in June. We are continuing to work on these projects that are underway. We're in the process of designing our next paving project. We will be starting an unhoused project here very quickly. And we are working on thinking about, beginning to think about, projects that are in year one. So that's starting July 1st. So we are beginning to think about them and how we move forward with them, how we scope them, et cetera. And then the next year process, this process starts all over again next February. So we've been working on this since February of this year, and here we are. So... Next slide, please. So this slide here, there's a lot going on here. But what I hear a lot when I'm out in the community and talking to people, I'm hearing a lot of people saying, is there anything going on with pickleball courts? And I'm like, there's a lot going on with pickleball courts. But if you look at this life cycle of a sample project, you can see the red arrow, the construction arrow, which is five arrows down. So all of that work that happens before that is something people don't see. Nobody sees that. They don't see that we've put an RFQ out for design services and start this design process. Then we go into a preliminary design process. And that is including any studies we may need to do, alternatives, cost estimates, et cetera. And we kind of, you know, take a lot of time there because there's a lot of people who have a lot of opinions on what something should be. And so we're looking at all of those alternatives. Then we move into, and I've got a little timeline along the bottom, too, and that's a range. I kind of got a little granular there, but it's a broad range. Then we move into a final design. And this is where sometimes we take a lot of time. We've got to negotiate land use agreements or right-of-way issues, things like that. We're getting permits. We're putting together a bid packet. We're looking at environmental issues, nesting birds, archaeological concerns. So you can see how this all takes a lot of time, and it really does. It's unusual for a capital project from... And you see my little light bulb up there? It all starts right there with an idea. Somebody's got an idea. So from idea to final completion, it's rarely under a year. It's very rarely under a year. So we're moving very quickly on pickleball because we... Because we are, because we have to. We have to. And so we had this... In the final design there, we were working with the county of Ventura on right-of-way. In this case, it was a land use agreement. And that was two parties that were working very, very well together and in conjunction. We all had the same goal. A lot of times, it's not like that. And we've seen that in Phase Two of the ATP project. We are challenged with right-of-way issues there right now. And so you can sometimes get stuck in any one of these places. And they just take time. It's just that simple. And then you go out to bid, and it's reasonable to expect any capital project to be out to bid for four to eight weeks. You know, that's not unusual. We want to get as many bids, as bidders, in as we can. People come from far away sometimes to work on projects here in Ojai. And we like to give them time. There's a lot of questions sometimes based on the plans. And then we launch into something people can actually see. And so we can be six to 12 months before we see groundbreaking and before people actually see something happening. So that can be frustrating for you, I'm sure, because people are wondering what's going on. Well, this is the very reason that we start our paving project. We are underway. We were in design on next year's paving before last year's paving wrapped up. Because it takes a year. It just takes that long. So you get through the construction, and then you have this closeout period, which is fairly quickly. The yellow diagonals up on top indicate about how many times you see it and make a decision on it. That's about the minimum, eight times for a capital project in all of these different phases. And then there's oftentimes study sessions because we're talking about alternatives. We're talking about other things. But so there you see it, and that's what takes so long, all of that. So any questions on this? I know there's a lot going on on this slide, but I thought it was important to spend a few moments and discuss really what it looks like. So...
So things like more benches around the city are part of this?
Yes. And that's an excellent question. We hope that we have a design for a bus shelter that we can work with and apply in other locations. The question is, and something that has come up, is maybe we select... And that's a project that I have in here that you will see, a location TBD. And one of the ideas that we have sort of thrown around staff is maybe we cover the shelter that's at the old bowling alley and improve that shelter. That's on private property. So we would be negotiating with the owner of the bowling alley, the old bowling alley, to see if we can get an easement like we did at Bank of America or, you know, other options. But most of the bus shelters would be, they're not in our public right-of-way. So we would have to be working with some property owner. So on that project, the design on that project could be squished because we already have a design that we like. But we may have some concerns on that final design when we start negotiating property. And that may take time. Bank of America took a year. And Bank of America was amenable to giving that to us in an easement. It still takes time. It's back and forth. You know, it's all kinds of things. It's working with attorneys on our side, on their side, and creating legal descriptions, et cetera. So...
Can I do a follow-up, mayor? I wasn't just thinking of the bus shelter projects, which are super important. And so thank you for that. But I was thinking about the need for, just for pedestrians that are walking around town and some kind of... I'm sure I can get a little army of volunteers to walk the town and see where they could be located. But I just want to make sure that what I call people parking stays part of that project, stays part of the future plan.
And we can certainly talk about that. I mean, we can add new projects throughout the course of the year, if, you know, if the council so wishes. And this is... This document also, it's a snapshot in time. It's right now. Things can move. Things can be added. Things can be deleted. Projects can shift from year to year. It's a living, breathing document. Again, it's a snapshot in time. That's all it is.
Yeah. No, this looks great. Thank you. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So with that prior slide in mind, I wanted to highlight a couple of projects. We are about to embark on some of the largest in scope and dollar amount projects that this city has ever seen. We really, truly are. They're multi-year, and they're very costly. So, and not to say we're not going to do them, but I just wanted to sort of highlight them for you. We've got some storm drain projects, and I've mentioned this to you as well in the past. We have to, we really have to start looking at our storm drain system. We've got, we had a... We, because Cedar's had a water break up on Signal not too long ago that wreaked havoc. I was out of the country that weekend, coincidentally. But our storm drains are about that age. They're about 60 years old. And they are well beyond their useful life. So you will see in this document, as well as in the budget, I am recommending that the city embark on a multi-year project to... Number one, we would start with a study, a master drainage study, identifying areas that need repairing, need, you know, improving, enlarging, increasing size, whatever the case may be. So we do a study upfront. It's not unlike our pavement management plan that identifies streets that need repairs. And then we program money in the budget in the coming years and kind of bite off chunks of that. We would do the same thing in the storm drain system. So you'll see that over a five-year period. So we would propose for year one, a study. And then the next four years out, improvements based on the results of that study. So it becomes a multi-year. Paving projects were well underway. We're moving along every year. And I expect that to continue in perpetuity. Because once we get all the streets done, we just start over. And the treatment stays the same. I mean, the treatment is different. We're not rebuilding streets potentially, but we're maintaining them now. We move more into a maintenance period, which is good. It's a good thing. We've got the ATP project, which is on the agenda this evening as well. That will, in all likelihood, be a multi-year project. And we've got our new unhoused housing project that will be a very ambitious project. They all are. I mean, we have an ambitious CIP. Next slide, please. So I wanted... These are, these slides, and I don't need to go through every single one of them. More than anything, I wanted to illustrate, these are projects that we've done this year. We have completed this year or are due for completion this year. So of course, the paving, the parking lots, you have not seen those yet. We are out to bid right now. We are hoping to repave Rainbow Bridge and the Plaza parking lots. And these fall under those, that criteria of health and safety. They've become unsafe. And so we are trying to get those moving along at this point. We have trip and falls, and they're just, you know, it's, they're in poor shape. So, and so on. We've done, you know, the gym floor this year, backup batteries, ball fields. Middle Stewart Canyon, right down here, is finishing up this year. We've, our grant that we got for that has finally finished, so we're done. And we will be restoring here before long. We're painting... So you see a little asterisk here on the painting of the arcade. So we are on deck. Staff is on deck to do that, paint the arcade, refresh it, and make it look nice. I think I'm going to push that out a little bit. There's so much chaos going on out there right now that I don't think we need to create anymore. So we may just start that after summer and move it on out a little bit. We're installing catch basins and our trolley bus shelter. Questions? Any questions? Next slide, please. So here's another sheet of closeout projects. So these projects were completed this year, but I wanted to spend a moment on this. These were in the CIP last year, and that's why I'm putting them up as closeouts. These types of projects, you won't see in the CIP anymore. They are, they're operating cost. The first two, the dollar amounts are insignificant. They aren't improving a fixed asset of the city. We bought gym equipment. We put a shade structure up at the wall at the skate park. And the truck purchase. Those were in the CIP in the past. They won't be anymore. It's, the truck purchase, it's a capital purchase, but it's not a capital project. So it goes into our vehicle replacement fund. So just wanted to sort of, I mean, this, I'm trying to sort of explain how all of this comes about. There were some sort of anomalies in prior year CIPs that I noticed. And so we're trying to take baby steps and kind of move it in the right direction.
Through the mayor? A quick question. So basically, what you're saying, and this is what you started with, is that there are projects and there are purchases. And they're not the same thing, although they may have been slightly merged in the past. And what you're doing is pulling them apart and differentiating them.
That's exactly right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
These types of purchases will still be made. They will, you will see them in the operating budget.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Next slide, please. So I am only highlighting on these slides, new projects. Projects that have not been in the CIP before. Because you were all here last year for the CIP. So you, not, I now don't expect you to remember all of them. But these are new projects that staff has gone out into the community, and we have, new things have come about, new concepts, new... So we just wanted to illustrate here. So we've got pickleball at Soul Park, a Phase Two. Phase One is this year, and we are hoping it's out to bid right now. I don't know if you've all seen them, seen the plans on the website, but they're out there. So they're out to bid. We hope to, I hope we get enough bids. And we'll open on May 1st and come back to you on May 14th and award the contract for Phase One, which is the courts themselves. Phase Two is, it's just sort of a placeholder. If we wanted to construct shade structures out there, benches, the original... The Phase One plan has some benches. But anything we think we might need after the courts open. So we've got a new project. So we have Libby Bowl improvements, TBD on the scope. Our city manager has suggested, after we get through a concert year and series, we maybe make some improvements that we think are necessary. So that's a new project. And likewise with the park, the lighting at Libby Bowl. And also to help facilitate the holiday lighting is what we're really kind of looking for on that one. City council chambers here at Kent Hall, since meetings are now being held here, we would like to have a project and, you know, not, we haven't really scoped it entirely yet, but, you know, maybe some improvements here. We will also be working on the bathrooms here and making them ADA compliant because we need to do that since it's now a public facility, public use. At Oak Tree House, which is the finance building, we are going to be retrofitting bathrooms there to provide shower facilities so city staff can shower after they've exercised at lunch. They've run the bike trail, and they want to shower and get back to work. So that's what we're doing there. We will be installing backup batteries at the Public Works Admin Building, which is where my office is. And just a backup battery system so if power goes down, we can still work and computers are working. And then our giant project, we all know what that is, the unhoused. So that will launch very soon. Question?
Okay. My question is about the city council chambers improvement, Kent Hall. You know, in the beginning, my understanding was that Kent Hall was going to be for really large audience meetings, and it's winter time. We can't put people outside. So I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would like, before you embark on that, I would like some kind of an analysis of the two places because I never approved that I wanted to be here permanently. I'm not unhappy here, but I do... Uh, I'm not unhappy here, but I do feel it bears some discussion before we, uh, embark on that. You know, I don't know if we need to put that on the agenda. And, and maybe it's a seasonal thing, because in the wintertime, this may, maybe this makes sense. But I don't even know the number of seats we have at, in, in our former council chamber and here. I don't know any of that and, and why this, uh, has, is, is moving in the direction of a permanent location.
And, and we can totally do that. And, and if you go back to that busy slide where I was talking about the, the timeline, we would look at those things in terms of alternatives. And, and we can do, you know, is, does this room, um, is the capacity here greater than the capacity over the, over at Old City Hall? And, and maybe we look at it if it's just a seasonal, you know, seasons.
For, for special.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Change out the wardrobe every season, you know, just kind of move around.
Okay.
So, yeah, and those, and those are part of the, of the preliminary design and the alternatives. And we would be looking at that and you would see them. We would be bringing those back to you. So that's all in this whole process.
Okay.
So, and I saw Ben noting that down, so we will be discussing that. Uh, next slide, please. So these are the new projects, not in year one, so they're not in the budget year, but they're in years two through five. And, and I should probably say now too, this is a five-year CIP, but we update it every year. So every single year is a five year. It's a rolling five years, every year. So, um, we've got this first one. This is the rapid flashing beacons that, that I've heard people want. We have, I have been in contact with Caltrans on that and they may be, um, amenable to installing those for us. They, they want to get through the paving project, as we all do, want them to get through the paving project. And, and then they will see if they have adequate funding left. And so I'm in negotiations with them right now. So that may not end up being a city project, but, but a Caltrans project. It is along their right-of-way, so it makes sense. But it's too soon to know for now. So.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry. So you're saying that if, for example, uh, we've heard for years that we desperately need the crosswalk front of coffee roasting company.
Yes.
Made safe before we have another fatality. We've had one or two.
Oh, High Avenue and Montgomery.
If Caltrans does not move forward in a timely fashion, uh, we could allocate and discuss or negotiate doing something ourselves. Is that what you're saying?
I, um, I am not saying that because that's already happened. Um, it's in year two. I've already programmed it in here. So if Caltrans doesn't do it, then we would remove it here. But we have it in our document already. So we're already planning on the possibility that we, we're already planning on us having to do it on our own. We may not have to.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So, but this, when you, I guess when you say year two, that makes me feel like it's somewhere in the future instead of more immediate.
It's, it's just not next year. So year two is twenty-five, twenty-six. So we're going to be, year one is fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So starting July first of twenty-four, ending June thirtieth of twenty-five. It will be a year from this June. And, and we can't get in there sooner than that anyways, because of the chaos going on on Ojai Avenue and the paving project that's going on. So, so a lot of these projects are phased and timed based on other things that are going on. So Caltrans is having, there's some challenges as we all know. And, and the time period, we can't get a definitive timeframe yet when they're going to be done through town. Allegedly, they're starting at, out of the city and coming, they're starting in the west and going east. We have re, we have requested that they start east and go west and get through our city first. That is to be determined yet.
Okay, so I will just ponder all that. Thank you.
I mean, and I can, I can restate it. I can.
No, no, no. You're very clear.
Okay.
I just have to think through.
Okay.
Because it, it's, to my way of thinking, it's an urgent situation.
Yes, I, I appreciate that.
And perhaps we can, you know, stick something in the crosswalk ourselves and take it down and whatever.
So we're talking about two locations as well. We're talking about both at Ojai Avenue, along the arcade, one at Montgomery and one across from Libby.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I, I would actually just like to reiterate that because it, they are both dangerous. So anything we can do to move that forward would be wonderful.
And I am in contact directly with Caltrans on that.
I'm sure you are. Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Lang?
I, I support that as well.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Lang? I do too. Um, and I have, I have a question. Uh, so you know, we are going to be having our goals and priority setting workshop that we, uh, postponed. Um, and one of the conversations that we were planning on having was about, uh, contracting some of the services out, like the trolley and, and things like that. Um, and so when I look at the, you know, charging, electrifying our, our trolleys, building charging stations, I think that's really important, given where, um, where, uh, you know, all the health and safety, all the, the climate, every, everything about that. So if we were to, uh, move toward contracting those services out, would that potentially speed up the timeline for, uh, building those facilities or, or having an electric, uh, electrical trolley, uh, fleet?
So there are some challenges and, and, and we've spoken about this before in terms of receiving an electric trolley. And in speaking with a Gold Coast who would be our option to, we would contract with, they, they are twenty-four months from the day they order a trolley to getting an electric one. So it's twen, it's twenty, it's two years. So that's the reason this, this, um, trolley, the EV charging is in year three. Because if we were to order one, say in the next six to eight months, we're not going to get it for two years. So again, this is a rolling plan. And if we get any additional updates or if the move is to try to move quicker, if there's, you know, options, we would do that. And we would bring it back to you and say, hey, we're going to move this into year two. And we would probab, it, it's, it's hard, obviously. It's harder to predict what goes on in years two, three, four and five, rather than the current year or next year. So it's a moving, it's a moving target and we, we are fully aware of the council's goals and we're trying to hit those marks. And, and technology hasn't necessarily cooperated a hundred percent on that. So lots of people, lots of agencies are trying to electrify lots of, lots of people on the list and a couple of years out. So, um, and we've already, oh, so, and install HVAC at Oak Tree House is another, is another one. That's, uh, at the finance building. So we'll be electrifying where we can and when we can. So in the trolley shelter, we've already talked about another one potentially. So.
Good.
Okay. Questions?
Um, I, I actually have another question too. And this is, this is, first of all, Lyndy, I cannot tell you enough how grateful I am for you and your leadership and just all of like how well you've organized this. Uh, you're really, you've done an incredible job.
Thank you.
So thank you. Um, uh, so I have a question, just, you know, I've been thinking, or, you know, in hearing what, uh, information from the California League of Cities and hearing what other cities are facing, you know, it's really clear that we have to be preparing for raising temperatures and for some of the effects of, of climate change. And, um, and so things like planting shade trees, uh, getting, you know, making sure that five years from now, ten years from now, we have done everything we can to mitigate, mitigate the effects of climate in addition to reducing our imprint. Um, would, would things like shade trees or would, I, I love the shelters. I think that falls under this category. But would, would planting trees be a part of this project or would that be in a different category?
Um, so in the past, we have had a climate mitigation section in our CIP. And we budgeted a lot of money. You directed staff to budget a lot of money to put in to climate mitigation, for example, um, street trees, et cetera. We have shifted that, that, that money out of the, the CIP and moved it into the operating budget. And so we are actively, in fact, I just walked town about, uh, let's see, what is it, Tuesday, last week, and, and identified some locations where there's, um, there's tree wells with no trees. Um, and so I walked out with our inspector slash project manager and we're like, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna install a tree here, install a tree, you know, and now it's Earth Week. So we were talking about, let's do this. So we have got plenty of money in our city budget to, um, plant trees and put them where we can. And we are actively doing that. We really are.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, and also as part of that too, now we have our, our wildfire mitigation. So we're planting new trees and we're trimming old trees because it's this cycle. It's this, it really is a cycle. So we've got new trees that are growing, old trees that need trimming and thinning and creating safe walking areas as well. So, and after winters like we've had the last couple, we've lost some big old tree branches and things like that. So.
Okay.
Right. Yeah. So, yep. So we're moving on. Um, next slide, please. So here's a couple of projects that have been sitting in our CIP for some period of time. And I am recommending at this point that we remove them from the CIP. And, and this, these are conversation pieces and, and I will start with this multi-sport court at Sarozody. I've had several meetings with the parks and rec commissioners, the ones that are there and have been there. And this project seems to have become less of a priority. It's been in the city budget and in the city CIP since twenty-eighteen. So a very long period of time with not a lot of activity and seemingly not a lot of interest anymore. And, and I guess my, one of my big fears on this particular project is, is we may find ourselves in a similar situation as we have seen out here at the pickleball courts in terms of the negative impacts to the neighbors. The plans that I've seen for this project, um, it abuts the property line really between the, the ball fields and the property. Uh, night play would be allowed, lit courts, and I can see that creating a problem for the neighbors. And so on another, on the prior slide, on a new project, so I have created another, a new project and that was, that's a half-court basketball court at Sarozody that, that may sort of pick up a knee. And, 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 and so I would recommend we remove this. And the other, the other, um, item related to this is we have some external funding. We have some state funding and we have some, uh, Ojai Civic Association funding. And I'm in communication with the state and it seems as though we may have an opportunity to shift that funding to other recreation programs that we have. So obvious one right now is pickleball. And there's a real possibility we can shift some of that grant funding to Soul Park and help pay for the pickleball courts there. And, and other improvements. I've spoken to our new, um, new recreation manager and I said, let's, let's do, uh, an all parks master plan. Let's really try to define and understand what the city's needs are for ASO playgrounds or ASO fields, ASO practice fields, um, and other recreational needs. And he was completely on board with that. So that's something that you will see in the operating budget. That there's, for a, a master plan for all the parks. What do we really need? So we have quite a bit of funding for this multi-sport court and we can probably shift most of that over to other projects that maybe, maybe have a higher priority, I guess, and a greater need. So, um, uh, same thing with the water park element. There was, um, there was a, uh, an item in the, in the CIP for a water park element to go along with the new, um, playgrounds out there. We're still moving forward with the playgrounds. A more of a tot playground and then, then older children's playground. And, and there didn't seem to be a lot of remaining interest for a water park element. So I'm just recommending we remove that.
Um, will, will, Will and I'd like that go to the Recreation, uh, Commission. And my other question is, uh, there's no question in the summer heat that we need something. Even if it's just like the mist, the misters in Libby Park are super popular in the summer. So we could, I, and I remember suggesting this two or three years ago, that we have misters in Sarozody.
Yeah.
You can even point them toward the, the bushes, whatever.
Yeah. And that, and that's a great idea. That's just a much more scaled down. They, they had talked about a water park element, which was more like a splash pad and something like that. But I am sure that we could incorporate some sort of misters when we, when we construct the new playground.
Yeah.
So, and, and.
Really into it because I got little grandkids who live there.
And, and, and of course, the commission is an advisory committee to you. And as soon as we have a commission, I would love to talk to them and, and get their feedback.
Okay.
But in the absence of that, I'm coming straight to you guys. So, um, and then we've got this Bryant Industrial Area Improvement. And, um, so I talked to James Vega last year about that and it was in our CIP, um, spanning two fiscal years at two and a half million each year. And I'm like, what the heck is that? And he wasn't real sure about what the scope was. I dug a little deeper and it looks like it, 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 that project was a result of complete streets. And at some point, somebody wanted to, um, create complete streets on Bryant Avenue. So I would recommend we remove that. It was, it was a huge dollar amount, number one. Again, we have challenges in implementing complete streets. But I will go back to a couple of previous conversations that I've had with all of you. And what I would suggest is we, we identify a street and we build it out complete streets. And we see what it looks like, see what it feels like, see what the cost is. Um, it's far too expensive for complete streets to be implemented on every single street. We've got too many, too many issues. It's too expensive. So maybe we, maybe we identify a pedestrian corridor and we begin on those streets and see how it feels. So that's what I would recommend in getting rid of this particular project.
Okay. Can we ask a question? I'm sorry. You're going to hear from me for the next four items. Okay. So, um, when you say Bryant Industrial Area Improvements, uh, you know, there's the demonstration project, uh, behind Wild Academy, the so-called Complete Streets Demonstration Project. And then we've had numerous conversations because we're concerned, we're building Cabrillo Housing.
We are.
And it's obvious that we are somehow, somebody, somebody, there has to be some way for the people that live there to safely walk down Bryant Street. There's just no question. That we have to do something appropriate. It could be if we don't have the money to build sidewalks, we can just reduce the speed limit to twenty and enforce it. Cause that alone makes the street safer and it's the least expensive after whatever we have to, studies we have to pay for. But, so, I mean, you're not, I, I want to get straight what you're saying. Uh, you're, you're recommending this be removed from the CIP. But isn't that an item that should go before the council for more discussion? I'm not clear.
It can. And that's why I put this slide up. Because I, I know that, that these projects and this, this alarming recommendation. And, and if there's anything that, that you want us to bring back for further conversation, we can certainly do that. I guess what I would say about Bryant Industrial Area, and I'm calling it, because that's how it's been identified in the CIP. I guess I would recommend re-scoping that, if anything. Because I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying. With Cabrillo, we want, we need to have a safe pedestrian area. The problem with that is, and I've, it, I, I feel like a broken record sometimes, but we've allowed, the city has allowed a lot of private improvements to be constructed in the public right-of-way. So if you look at the curb face to curb face, that's a very, that, our right-of-way goes beyond that on both sides. But we don't have the ability to really improve that like we should because there's power poles, there's mailboxes, there's stone walls. There's all kinds of permanent structures that we have allowed over time and I'm not placing, but it's just been over time. So, so something on Bryant, what we may want to do is come in instead of out. So, um, and I would have to illustrate that on a sketch to show you what I'm talking about. But rather than going out from the curb face, which is to the extent of our right-of-way, maybe we come in. Um, the, just a lot of, here we go back to these alternatives. We go back to that phase of, of a project is these alternatives. And there could be many. And we present them to you and you select one.
So while we're on the subject, if I may, because you know, you'll. So, while we're on the subject, if I may, because you know, you'll, right now, the, oops, the bike trail stops abruptly, mysteriously, and on Bryant Street. And so, the, the bike trail, uh, extension and Bryant Street are infinitely connected, those two. And so, we've got whole families, I've, you know, turning, wanting to go back into town. You know, they realize they're stuck now. They gotta find Sarozody Park, there's a sign. So, somehow we have to make that safe for the families. I don't see it, how we can get around that. Um, it's a safety, it's a safety can, priority.
Are you talking about the end of the bike, bike trail?
Yes, yeah. Even if we extend it, there's gonna be a lot of people. Because first of all, it's no longer just industrial. We've got, you know, a big social scene going on with brewery and we'll probably have cannabis lounges and everything else in the future. And, um, so, uh, okay, so what are we, Bryant Industrial Area Improvements? That, 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 you're talking about bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements and everything else?
Well, um, I, I don't, I'm not talking about anything because I don't really know what the scope of that project ever really was.
Okay, okay.
I've gone to complete streets, the document, and I see Bryant out there as one of the streets that has been looked at. And so, yes, there's, there's, um, there's bicycle lanes, et cetera. Um, but nothing's been designed. It's a concept at this point. It's just conceptual. So, so in order to do any improvements out there, we would create a project. I would recommend anyways, we create a project, um, uh, um, maybe, uh, maybe at the time we pave Bryant. You know, that, that, and, and if you look at, and I, and I will come back to this, but you see the next one, Grand Avenue Bike Lanes, that should not be a standalone project. That will be done when we pave Grand. You know, we will, we will attempt to do what we can do, but we've also talked about sheroes there, which are no good. Um, but so, so if, if we wanted to look at a project on Bryant to create pedestrian and, and cycle safety, then, then that could be along with the paving project, which is the logical time. It's just the logical time. I don't recall where it is, where Bryant is in the five-year PMP, but I can certainly look at that and we can, you know, we can revisit this.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, if I could jump in to the mayor. A suggestion on this one, as we remember back to Lindy's slide about the pro, process of a CIP project, there's that alternatives and design discussion. This is that discussion that we should have when it's straight up on the agenda. Bryant Streets Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Improvements. And so, staff's recommendation this time is to delete the unscoped, unplanned, five million dollar line item that's just Bryant area industrial improvements. Delete that from the CIP and replace it with a coming discussion on what makes sense and what scope and level of improvements for the Bryant, uh, Bryant Avenue in the Bryant Circle. Uh, looking at the bike trail connection, looking at the pedestrian connections between Cabrillo and the north and of the south, um, and looking at sort of it as a, a full scope. So, that's the recommendation at this time on that one.
And, and if I could also just quickly chime in, I know our community development director has been working with a developer on some things behind the scenes about making connections to Ojai Avenue and the trail and so forth. So, there will be more on that, but absolutely, and there he is.
Here he is.
Mr. Seaver, do you wanna speak on that really quickly?
Thirty seconds. If, if this council remembers back in December of last year, one of the conditions as a part of the Cabrillo project, that fifty unit project, a three-story project, um, talked about having a conversation, looking at grants, working through the county or through the state. We've been navigating that course right now. I know, I don't know that I really have explained that to Lindy at this point, but that's one of the pieces we're looking at. It's extending beyond their boundaries. Their boundaries are the requirement that they have, and that's something that we're working through right now. But the trail up to Ojai Avenue, those are much bigger projects and certainly something that needs a lot more thoughtful consideration. So.
Thank you, Lucas. I have, through the mayor.
So, when we're talking about complete streets, just as a part of conversation, and I know that this will come up, I don't wanna go into the weeds, but we had also talked about or brought up the idea of sort of having a circle within the downtown corridor that would allow people to walk and bike, like calming streets, you know, whether it's Oak Street down, you know, because there are other options. Um, would that be part of, I mean, are we thinking a complete street project? Or are we going to, and, and this could be yet to be decided, you know, uh, targeting Bryant and then targeting sort of the downtown corridor for, you know, biking and walking? Um, because that seems to me to also be something that really fits in.
That would be my vision, honestly. I think that that would be a really good goal. We've been so, um, we've been so proactive over the last year or so, that I can speak of anyways, in trying to get streets, um, to a condition that are safe to drive and that don't, you know, look potholy and all that. But I think that would be a very, very good project. We identify some streets and we create this walking corridor. I really do.
In and out of, of where, you know, east and west as far as it seems reasonable.
I mean, I think that's a very, very good vision. I really do.
And, and I have one other question. Um, we had talked about, and this is sort of directed to the, uh, city manager, we had talked about at some point a joint use, um, agreement potentially with the Unified School District that would provide us with a fair amount of some of these things. And I was just wondering, um, are we still talking about that? I mean, you and I talked about that a while ago and it just seemed to me to be like I'd never heard of a joint use agreement, but geez, now that's something.
Yes, through the mayor, we're, we're exploring a reciprocal use agreement. I brought it up with the superintendent. Also, um, our new recreation manager wants to bring it up with his counterpart over at the school district, so we will come back on, on that one. We'll work with the city attorney as well. There's a lot of facilities and we don't have to recreate everything. We could share some things.
Great, thank you.
And that also might feed into our master parks. You know, because why create more when we have the facilities here in town and just joint use?
Yeah, and figure out what the school district wants.
Exactly.
And.
See what everyone needs.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I think we can say that what our city attorney stated about Bryant also applies to Grand Avenue. I mean, you know, those Grand Avenue Bike Lanes have been discussed since nineteen ninety-six, okay? I'm not, I mean, or maybe even nineteen ninety-four, before I was on the council in nineteen ninety-six. Yeah, we, it was discussed. So, you're not, for the public looking at this slide, if they're just looking at it, we're not saying remove Grand Avenue Bike Lanes. We're saying that it's going to go somewhere else as part of a, it, it, we're not removing the concept.
We are, no.
Grand Avenue is major bike corridor, you know, to, to, to all those neighborhoods, all the kids going down Grand Avenue. And, um, you know, I led bike trains there. We needed four police escorts for the kids to safely get to Topa Topa, and that is unacceptable.
And I totally agree. The challenge is on Grand, um, is that it is, it's a race. It's a speedway. There are no stop signs. It's a nice straight section for a very long time. And so, maybe, maybe we look at a parallel street as the major, you know, walking pedestrian or cycling street. I think this is, and, and we're, as Matt said, we're only removing this unscoped project to the, you know, these are unscoped. We're not saying abandon the goals at all. We're not saying that at all. These are good things. They just need to be scoped and they need to find a different place in our, in our plan.
But, so, I mean, I have, I found all my copies of the, um, the twenty sixteen Complete Streets Plan. That, that's, that was the reinvention of the original nineteen ninety-eight Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan that I could never get three votes to implement. And now we have a different council and a different consciousness and we're in the midst of climate change. So, even if you, when you, I agree that we might need to begin with some kind of, um, uh, you know, alternative routes or whatever. But in truth, in reality, any street where people live, where children are playing and walking, our goal as a small town should be every single street in Ojai with housing should be safe and for people to comfortably walk without worrying if somebody's gonna kill them. And we just had another accident on the corner of Grand and Mercer. So, everybody's talking about the increased accidents and how it used to be. And so, we have to look at the reality that we, it's unacceptable for Grand Avenue to remain a speedway. That's a, a, it's a, it's, I know it has some kind of label, what is it, a thoroughfare? But it's still a residential street and as important as those side streets.
Yeah, it's an arterial, um, street.
Yeah, arterial.
So, if I could just jump in really, so I think your concerns, council member, are gonna be addressed through enforcement. And that's, that's a separate discussion.
And also design, both.
Well, yes, but I think what, so what we're talking about is kind of a combination. What you're seeing successful cities do in this area is, is like what Ms. Palmer is suggesting. You identify a non-arterial and you, and you create an east-west and a north-south pathway that's like a bike and/or pedestrian boulevard, and that's how you start it. And you, so what you don't do is you don't try to tackle every single street because you just don't have the resources or the bandwidth to do it. So, you, you would create these bike and pedestrian boulevards and then it's, it's an evolution and a training, uh, process so that the community and the public begins to understand, oh, if I'm gonna be on my bike, I don't go on Grand if I'm going this direction. I go on this street because it's, it's a better route to go. But on top of that, what we'd also like to suggest as part of the budget, and I've been talking to the chief about this, is a motor officer either on a part-time or a full-time basis because I really think part of our issue is we're just not doing enough traffic enforcement because we're not dedicating the resources towards it.
But, but, uh, I, I beg to differ because I've been at this for a long time, about twenty-five years. And it is completely unacceptable to my way of thinking that the Grand Avenue at this point in time still has not been redesigned, restripped. You know, our favorite character, Bob Daddy and I, we've been advocating this. We've stood on that corner. We've done traffic counts. We've submitted analysis to the Complete Streets people, you know.
So, I guess if I could just interrupt really quick, I'm sorry.
So, arterial, al, al, okay, I, I, I'll leave it alone, but just, in my opinion, even though Grand Avenue is an arterial.
Arterial.
Arterial street, uh, it is, it's not like we have all these alter, other arterial streets. We only have Grand Avenue and Ojai Avenue really because those other streets don't go all the way through. And people are riding their bike down Grand to go to the east end. They don't wanna zigzag.
We do have a packed, packed agenda and these are time-sensitive items, so.
Thirty-year challenge won't be solved in one moment.
And, and we will agendize that in the future.
Just wanna make sure we don't forget. Thank you. Thank you for tolerating me.
So, I'm gonna go down to the second from the bottom, the bike trail bridge at Fox Canyon. So, the County of Ventura is going to be paving, repaving the bike trail from Ventura to the end. And I have walked that area. This is a project, again, that's been on the city's books for a number of years, uh, unfunded really, or underfunded for sure. Uh, and, and so I walked it with, with the deputy director of parks at the County of Ventura and he said he would definitely take a look at that and, and, and they're in the design stages as well. So, he said he would look at that and try to come up with an alternative and something that would make it safer. That's an unsafe bridge on a bike trail. It really, really is. And so, he and I actually walked it. He took pictures and so, they're on that. So, that's why I'm recommending that one removed. Speed survey, um, we're going to come at some of these speed issues with new signage and with reinforcement or enforcement of the speed limits right now. So, that would also just be an operating expense anyway, so it doesn't belong in the CIP. So, questions?
Yes, thank you. A question about the speed survey. Is that, that is a separate issue from the DROWN speed study? Is that correct? Is that, there are two, we're talking about two different things?
This is a general, a general holding place for a speed survey, but it is separate.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, um, one of the items that will sooner or later be on the agenda is the twenty-five mile per hour citywide speed limit. And some places twenty miles and some places like the Arbola, even fifteen. Then people will cut, stop using it as a rat runner. So, anyway, um, the, so they, we're not working at cross purposes. Are you going to hire, or is that already a done deal that we're hiring somebody to do a speed? It's just gonna be removed and re, and re, and placed somewhere more logical and practical?
Well, our, our suggestion is actually a little different. We're, we're suggesting that we think of more, we, we know that there are concerns about the speed limit. And it, you know, a part of the solution could be having a uniform speed limit throughout town. You'd wanna have a traffic engineer and your law enforcement folks involved with that, of course. But rather than embarking upon an effort to do speed studies all over the place that are gonna come back and tell you that you've got some people that are exceeding the speed limit.
We already know.
We know that, right. So, we think that a better approach would be allocating resources towards either a portion or all of a motor officer, motorcycle officer to write tickets and citations to slow people down. That's our suggestion. We're gonna be coming back to you with that in the proposed budget. And if you don't like that, you don't have to include that in the budget. You can throw it out.
Well, we're gonna need that whether we need change the speed limit or not. So, I, I approve of that.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is we don't, we don't think a speed survey is a good use of your money. We think a better use of your money is a cop.
I agree. Thank you. Okay.
And the other, the other concerns with, when we're doing these random speed surveys all throughout the city, then, then, then a traffic engineer comes back with recommendations or alternatives and then we're faced with implementing those. At every single different location and it becomes cost prohibitive and it, so, so.
Okay.
That's part of it too.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide please. So, these are, and we've sort of, I've sort of alluded to some of these already, but, um, there are some items that you have seen, some projects that you've seen in the CIPs in the past. And here's just a sampling of them. These are, these are not being removed from the CIP. These are being moved from the CIP into other cost centers. So, miscellaneous concrete repairs. This is, this is if we go out, we, we see a, a street tree that has uplifted a sidewalk. We have this in our operating budget. Bike lane striping, this is going to be as part of our paving projects. Same thing with, um, implementing facilities, ADA, we are, you're seeing a lot of new ramps being installed. All of our master plans, we've got a storm drain master plan and we've got our all parks master plan. Those are not projects per se. Those are professional services that would be moved into the operating budget. Uh, vehicle purchases would go into the capital purchases. So, you won't see these in the CIP anymore. So, but they're, they're all getting done still. They're just not in this, in this plan. Next slide please. So, the next steps, we have come to the conclusion, a conclusion here of this presentation, but the next steps are looking for feedback from all of you. If you have any, staff would go back and, and, and make those revisions to this document. It would be included with the budget for adoption in June, along with the budget. Next slide? Next slide? There you go.
Okay. All right, before we, uh, take public comment, any questions from council? Nope. I do have a, in, in terms of, uh, Lindy, first of all, this was amazing. Thank you so much. I mean, so thorough and so exciting, all these new projects.
Really going on.
Really grateful, yes. Um, in terms of replacing roofs, I was just, I've heard that it's, it saves money if you put solar panels in when you replace them. So, would that be possible?
Oh, you know what? You will see. So, I have for all of you to take home with you. Each of these projects that you see has a detail sheet. A detail sheet with a, with a project location and with a description and an objective. And so, you will see that we are replacing roofs and we are putting solar panels in. And we have worked, I've worked with, um, with our expert who's standing up there in the back. I had him show up tonight. So, we are timing a new roof replacement with a solar panel. So, that's what we're already doing and you'll see that in these, in these detail sheets.
Excellent, thank you. Um, Councilmember Lang?
So, just, just, just to clarify, just to, I'm, I'm gonna repeat, repeat back to this. So, am I correct in, in, in understanding that a lot of the climate, uh, that a lot of climate initiatives are already packed into some of these projects? And based on the response that you just gave, uh, the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also have a climate section.
Right, correct, correct. Yes, I saw that.
So they are, they are, you'll see them in a couple of different places. Roofing, for example, would show up in a facilities improvement. The solar, um, panels would show up in the climate section as a separate project. But the timing has been, has been worked out.
Okay. Another question, would that also count for, uh, you know, for climate, uh, measures in our paving plan? For, for example, um, somehow, uh, you know, there are more porous types of concrete and more porous types of asphalt that don't release as much heat. Are we looking at those measures as well?
You know, we have not necessarily looked at all of those. We are, we are in such a, um, a sort of an aggressive movement right now because there's been such a delay in paving. We will begin to look at those. We will begin. Last year, I kinda adopted it. This year, we're moving forward with, we're just doing pavement. I'm, I'm expecting next year we will start really looking at how to improve rather than just, you know, triage at the moment.
Okay, great. And, and I was happy to see the battery backup and, and other, other things that you had in, included already, uh, related to climate.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, if I understand, um, what we're doing, I just wanna make sure that I, that I do understand what we're doing. But the, the CIP is just one piece of the budget that we're gonna be adopting.
It is.
And you're introducing to us the nuts and bolts of what it is. And we're gonna combine it with operational budget and other things to, to come up with the overall.
That's exactly.
Budget for the city.
Exactly, yes, it becomes a part of the adopted budget.
Yeah. So we're not really doing policy tonight as much as learning about what it is that's gonna go into our budget. The, the policy will go into that.
Yes.
Budget, uh, process that we go through.
Yes.
The mayor, yeah, go ahead.
And the, and the goals exercise that we're working on is all part of that. So, um, what we're doing tonight is, you know, approving where we are and understanding that we're going somewhere in the next few months that, uh, will result in a budget.
Yes, and I sort of wanted to spend some, I know we have spent quite a bit of time on this, but I know last year, this didn't happen and three of you were new last year. Um, and, and I think it's important, this is where a, a huge chunk of the city's resources go in the next five years, in the next one year. So it's sort of important for all of you to, to have a, an, an understanding of, of projects we're working on and how we're spending our money.
And, and I guess my final point or question is that for those in the public who are thinking, well, what about this? Why aren't we addressing, you know, electrification, getting rid of, uh, fossil fuel type of activities for the city? It is, this is not the place where we're doing that.
Well.
It's all, it's all going to be, um, the, the opportunity for everybody to put input into the city, we'd like you to see, spend more time and focus on a particular project. They could still do that, we're not deciding that tonight.
No, um, we, we have, um, put in projects that relate to that goal and we also are moving forward with electrifying our fleets as, as we can. It's a challenge again.
Right.
And we are replacing all of our, uh, we're putting in electric HVACs where we can, solar panels where we can, so we're, we're folding that in.
Um, through the mayor? Um, so, so what I understand is you're talking about projects, which is not, there is a philosophical approach that want, that the city has, whether that be in the general plan or however, where we talk about the priorities that we have overall, i.e. be that climate mitigation, electric, electric, whatever. Yeah, thank you. Um, but this is project-based. This is a project that we're going to do that connects to that goal in a certain way, correct?
Absolutely, and you can see it throughout the document.
Yeah, right.
You can see it throughout all of these projects. It, it takes in all the goals and spits out a project. You know, our unhoused, we, we hear that's a goal, we know that's a goal, so we're spitting out a project. You know, I mean, I mean, that's what it is.
Right.
Paving's a, paving's a goal of the city, so we're producing the projects.
Right, so it takes the goals and it makes a project to, to basically fulfill that goal.
Right, to that end.
And it's, it's very specific to that end.
To that end.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Just a brief question for, actually for the city manager because, um, I get a lot of questions about the trolley and it's so visible. Could, and, and in terms of electrification, could you, and we had spoken a little bit about some, you know, grant funding?
Yes, and, and Ms. Palmer and I have both been involved along with the mayor in conversations with CPA, our, um, Community Choice Aggregate, JPA that we belong to. And there is funding available to help us pay for the infrastructure, the, the charging apparatus. It's, it's, it's a considerable effort to invest in that, it's probably a few hundred thousand dollars to do, but there is grant money to help us with that. The bigger challenge, as Ms. Palmer pointed out, is actually getting the vehicle delivered to you. Um, you know, if, if it's council's desire, we could certainly put that in the next budget and start that process, but it is about a two-year effort. And just on the topic of contracting out that service, that's something that council will decide, not staff. Um, but if council does want to do that, our proposal would be that we would own the asset. And so the look and feel of the trolley would remain what we want it to be, would just, we would have someone else operate it for us, someone with a broader bench of drivers and experience in, in that area. So we understand how important the trolley is to town and people that come here. Uh, we actually wanna, wanna expand the, the trolley routes. Carl, you may, or may not know this, has received the good news that he is now in charge of the entire transit function, so.
Congratulations, that's great.
And, and, and he, and he's already been very impactful. We're, we're, we've got another trolley that's now back in service thanks to Carl and his efforts. So anyway, more, more on that to come, but we understand the importance of it, it's just a longer process.
Thank you.
And through the mayor, just a, a final comment, that as a member of the Ventura Council of Governments, every city is struggling with this. Um, they have, in fact, some cities have mandates to electrify and they can't get the vehicles. Um, so it is causing every city in Ventura, this is a big conversation that has, that happens at VCOG about the inability to actually source those. The intent is certainly there, um, and even the money is there, but the vehicle isn't there. Um, so it's something that everyone in Ventura, all cities in Ventura County are, um, struggling with and trying to put pressure, you know, there's just huge competition for the electrified vehicles. Try, you know, companies, private companies, public entities, municipal, you know, so, um, we have, we have intent and hopefully supply will, um, come about, yeah, will follow.
Okay, well, we will go ahead and move on to public comment. We have Renee Roth.
Am I the only one? Oh my gosh. Okay, I'm Renee Roth, I live in Ojai. I was trying to get on Zoom so I could do this on Zoom, but I didn't have a connection and I didn't know who to call, so I had to run down here with my cane and try to do this. So sorry, but I'm here. Um, in terms of the CIP, way to go! We have a few projects to find, I'm glad to see that, I'm very glad to see that. Um, the one thing that I noticed in a transition from the past to the current moment is James made a big deal about the gymnasium roof. Now, maybe it was talked about in the translation from me getting from here to there, but I didn't see the gymnasium roof on this list of projects. And I remember that was a, over a million dollar kind of pro, oh, it's on there?
It's on here.
Okay, good.
It's on the details.
Oh, it's on the detail part, okay. I, I looked at the staff report, I didn't see the million dollars on there. And I've been looking for it because I remember the park and rec department had a five-year plan. And they had a five-year plan for all these amazing projects they were gonna do for the Park and Rec District. And it never really went anywhere and nobody really did anything with it, but I love the talk about solar and doing roofs together at solar time and roof time. And also, that roof is an amazing roof to capture rainwater from the roof to put into a rain garden, a rain catchment garden. Some of you remember, I put in Matilha School Yard Habitat and one of the big roofs, one of the other big roofs in town is the Matilha Gymnasium that has a huge roof. And we tried to get the school district to direct that flow of water out to a rain garden. But they didn't choose to do that. They chose to direct the water out to some basketball courts, much to my dismay. I would like to see the city do it right this time and be able to put in rain capture, rain gardens, teach people about how to capture rainwater on city property. That park is a beautiful place and it could and should be used to demonstrate environmental projects. So thank you for all this environmental talk, thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Any, any comments online? Oh, we have Brian Akins.
I didn't wanna miss this opportunity. So I'm, uh, here as the president of the Ojai Valley Museum. I know in discussions with Wendy, uh, and I think it's the heating system, which is cur- currently gas-driven, is something that has been discussed, uh, needing to be, uh, replaced. And so I'm just putting that to bits out. I have enjoyed fine presentation, being on the other, on your side, Lindsay, throughout my career. So, uh, just, again, the museum, uh, I think that's a big item. Whether it hits your capital expenditure threshold or not, that's up to you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Any comments online?
Yes, mayor, we have one comment online from Michelle Ellison. Michelle, you may now unmute your mic.
Good evening, um, I appreciate the projects being proposed for climate and reducing emissions. It's a good start, so thank you, thank you. Um, I just wanna highlight though the urgency and magnitude of the climate crisis that we're facing and that we should really be increasing the priority and amount that we're allocating for decarbonization projects in this year's CI budget, uh, CIP budget and all years thereafter until we have achieved, achieved zero emissions for our city operations. As drafted, I noticed that only 1% of next year's CIP budget is allocated for getting off fossil fuel gas in our city buildings. And this is just much too little and does not reflect our community's support for climate action, so we can and must do much more and do it quickly. Our five-year plan should account for full electrification of all city buildings along with energy efficiency measures and electrification of all of our fleet and acknowledging some of the constraints we're facing, but we should really be fast-tracking all of these projects. Um, so let's get the CIP to comprehensively capture that goal. Uh, so I'd recommend that we see where money can be moved from other line items in the budget that are less urgent or necessary. You know, let's evaluate what our wants versus what our needs, uh, and reallocate funding to getting off fossil fuels in earnest. I think about it kinda like, let's dealing with this, let's deal with the crisis at hand. This is an existential devastatingly costly, um, climate breakdown that we're facing and let's, let's deal with that, do our part, um, achieve zero emissions here in our community and then we can get on to doing the other wonderful things that we all want for our community. Uh, so I just wanna thank you and gratitude to city staff for all of your work on this as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
That's all for online.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I feel like we've already had it.
Well, do you wanna start?
No, I already did. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion. And we can take it from there. Um, so I, I think that, that the motion is that, um, we move to adopt this preliminary CIP, I don't know if it would be preliminary, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would suggest, mayor and council, you might phrase the motion as, direct staff to move forward with the CIP as proposed for consideration and adoption at a future meeting. Because we're not adopting it tonight.
Yes, right, exactly. Um, yes. I, I, I see that, that our, that our city clerk is writing that as we speak. Perhaps you could read it back to us and then we could, um, if it has a second, we could move forward. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll, I'll second if, if it includes all the comments and the, you know, that we spoke of, yeah.
Would you, um, please read back the motion?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a motion by council member Rule, seconded by council member Francina, to direct staff to move forward, um, and bringing this, uh, and bringing the five-year proposed capital improvement program, uh, forward as recommended to our budget discussion. I believe that's correct.
Any final comments?
Yeah, I, I just wanna, um, support what Ms. Ellison had to say, that, you know, we should, um, we should look at every way that we can reduce our carbon impacts on the community. We should show the example, um, to homeowners of reducing our carbon-based emissions and, um, and we should do things aggressively within our, um, projects and programs to achieve that goal.
And I would just like to reiterate that, thank you for saying that. And, um, also, once again, thank you so much. We have an incredible public, public works director and staff, so we are grateful. All right, are we ready for a roll call?
All right. Mayor, Mayor Protem Whitman.
Yes.
Council member Lang.
Yes.
Council member Francina.
Yes.
Council member Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, wonderful. All right, let's take a very brief break and we will be back, thank you.
Thank you for that break, I needed it.
No, I mean, if I, if I would've given you this, this would've been too much. Here's all the detail sheets.
Right.
Okay, if everybody could take your seats, we will get going. We are back. Okay, if everybody could, please come to quiet. We are moving on to, actually, is there any public communications? This is our public communications remainder. Do we have any? Nope. Okay. All right, we will move on to item number three, design review permit and planned development permit for proposed three-building, 15-unit deed-restricted affordable housing project on 304 South Montgomery Street. And we have a staff report.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could, we could pull up the slide deck, James, please. Ah, there it is. Good evening, my name is Lucas Seibert. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. The item we have before you tonight is a project, a 15-unit, 100% affordable housing project located at 304 South Montgomery Street. Next slide, please. A little bit of background, very briefly here. The developer is Ojai Bungalows LP, and this is really a part of a settlement agreement that was reached and brought before this council at the December 18th meeting of last year. That includes four project sites, this being one of them, a mix of deed-restricted affordable housing and market-rate housing, and then a timeline for a public hearing process. And really what that piece means is what we're seeing tonight. This item actually went before the Planning Commission on two different meetings, but then had a recommendation on March 20th of this year to come before this body. The proposed project itself includes the development of 15 units, deed-restricted, for-rent, affordable housing project consisting of residential units only. Next slide, please. Where is this at?
They're not at this point. They're not back here.
Okay, we can take a look at that. Oh, they went blank. Where is this located? As we're working through some technical pieces here. South of Ojai Avenue, north of Ojai Valley Trail, on the east side of Montgomery Street. To the west is Libby Park. Surrounding it, on the north and west to a certain degree, is residential. The zoning is Village Mixed Use, or VMU. That is consistent with the general plan designation of Village Mixed Use as well. The lot size is about .62 acres in area. A little bit of fun history, the site itself did have a single-family residential, single-story house on it, as well as an accessory structure, really tucked towards the rear to the east portion of the lot. That was then demoed in right around 2016. Next slide, please. The why. Why is this project coming forward? Well, there are housing laws that are now in place. One is SB 330, one is the Housing Accountability Act, which is referred to as HA, and another is State Density Bonus Law, which continues to evolve and change and manifests itself over time, year after year, sometimes mid-year. SB 330 really prohibits local jurisdictions from enacting new laws that would have the effect of reducing the legal limit on new housing within their borders, within the city of Ojai's jurisdictional boundaries, or delaying new housing via administrative or other regulatory barriers. What does that mean? Once an SB 330 application is submitted for an affordable housing project, it basically freezes our rules. So, if we come up with a new rule or new law, that law does not impact that particular project. In terms of the Housing Accountability Act, or the HA, it limits local government's ability to disapprove or delay housing development projects for arbitrary reasons. Preponderance of the evidence is one of the pieces that's used. Fairly strict and fairly difficult in terms of addressing that hurdle. And then the third is the State Density Bonus Law, and that rule has really evolved over the past probably three to five years. It affords a developer of a housing project certain benefits if the development includes a threshold number of affordable units. Those development benefits include a density bonus, which is an increase in the number of units on a particular site, concessions or incentives, which are basically taking our standards and curbing them to a certain degree or reducing them, waivers, which are basically arguments to waive any of our standards that are being requested, and then parking ratios, using density bonus law parking standards, which are greatly reduced in terms of how we address parking. Next slide, please. From a site design standpoint, here you can see the site itself. On the west, which is to the left, is Montgomery Street, not Ojai Avenue. To the north is a single-family residential use, which is just to the top. To the bottom is a vacant piece of land, and then to the east is a substation for Addison. The site itself is 15 studio units spread amongst three buildings, Building 1, Building 2, Building 3. You can see those here. Building 1 is a single-level building. It contains three units. Building 2 is a two-story building containing seven units. Building 3 is a partial two-story building, kind of tucked towards the back, and that contains five units, three on the bottom, two on top. With the 15 studio units we're talking about here, it also includes 15 parking spaces, which is per density bonus law. A one-to-one ratio when you have a studio or one bedroom as proposed, and that's what we have here. There's also a central courtyard with a central feature. That is to be worked out at this moment. Could be a water feature, it could also be a heritage tree. Landscaping is proposed to be native drought-tolerant plant palette, and preservation of existing oak trees is also being considered and included. One thing to note, on the north side, which is at the very top, you can see a little pork chop. That actually is put in in order to preserve two oak trees that are currently on site. Next slide, please. The site itself is 100% affordable. What does that look like? Well, 12 of those units are moderate income. That's 80% of the total units. Three of those units are low-income units. That's 20%. Next slide, please. What does that mean? Affordability distribution. As a low, as a low level and as a moderate, three and the 12, low is households earning no more than 80% of the area median income. Moderate then means households earning no more than 120% of the area median income. What does the area median income mean? Well, as of 2013, or 2023, and certainly we'll see in 2024 and the coming weeks, once HCD releases their new numbers, Ventura County's area median income is 123,500, and that's for an area median income of four-person household. Next slide, please. The VMU zone allows for eight units per acre per the Ojai Municipal Code. The project is proposing 15 units on .62 acres. How do we reach the desired density in this case? Let's do a quick math equation, fairly simple, straightforward. It's State Density Bonus Law plus a planning tool or permit that is allowed within the Ojai Municipal Code, which is the Planned Development Permit, or the PDP. Next slide, please. Density bonus breakdown. As I had mentioned in the previous slide, it's eight units to the acre. Eight units into .62 yields 4.96 per density bonus law. We round that up to five units. We take that five units and attach, based on the makeup of their affordability, a 35% density bonus. That 35% density bonus equates to 1.75 density. That then is added to the five, that gets us to 6.75, again rounding up to seven units. Seven units is what will be allowed without a proposed PDP, which is what we have. Next slide, please. With the increase from 15, or from seven to 15, that's a roughly 115% increase, that then requires the necessity for a Planned Development Permit, which is what's before this council tonight as well. A design review permit as well as a Planned Development Permit. Next slide, please. The Planned Development Permit itself is and allows for maximum flexibility in site, planning, property development. It also protects the integrity and character of Ojai whilst encouraging creative and innovative development projects. It is really a planning tool for projects within the VMU zone, and city council approval is required for applications regarding density increase. In a nutshell, Planned Development Permits are, instead of doing a variance, this is what we're talking about. There is no variance process when we're looking at the Village Mixed Use Zone itself. It's this process. Next slide, please. From a density bonus standpoint, it's incentives and concessions, parking, waivers. The incentives concessions, the project qualifies as an affordable housing mix project to development incentives. In this case, the developer is only requesting one concession, and that is a reduction in landscaping width development standard. It would reduce to two feet along the eastern edge of the property. Typically, it's six feet. That's the minimum requirement. From a parking standpoint, the Ojai Municipal Code calls for 23 parking spaces. That's if we're applying the strictest standard of our parking requirements. State Density Bonus Law allows for a reduced parking demand, which is 15 parking spaces, or a one parking space for each bedroom. Knowing that the bedrooms themselves are studios or one-bedrooms, it's a one parking space requirement for each unit. From a waiver standpoint, no waivers are being requested at this moment or as part of this project. Next slide, please. Project takeaways. The address or addresses housing shortages, there's a shortage of affordable housing in both Ojai and California as a whole. That is identified through our RENA numbers, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation. The local developer, as a local developer, they are familiar with Ojai's character. It's not a developer that's coming outside of the city, it's a developer that actually lives in the city. The Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or the RENA numbers, allocates regional-specific numbers for affordable housing that provides for the opportunity of the developer or property owner to develop affordable housing through an objective review process, which is what we have tonight. In here is also our RENA numbers. I think we're all familiar with those. It's 53, that is our target number. With the settlement agreement and with other projects that we've had come forward before this body, we're getting to a net zero. Next slide, please. With that, staff is making recommendations. That feels like a stock photo, sorry. City Council to consider the following. Receive the information and presentation provided by staff and the applicant developer. It's a fresh look. It's a fresh look. Uh, asking clarifying questions of staff and applicant of the, of this proposal, and then open the matter for public comment. And then lastly, consider the resolution and associated conditions and, and approve the project located at three oh four South Montgomery. That is a part of the resolution, which is attachment A to the staff report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Seabird, that was lovely. Nice-looking lentils, too. Any questions from council?
So um, um, this is part of a settlement agreement that has multiple other parts. In other words, there are other projects that are in the pipeline moving forward and is our resolution here contingent upon the other parts of the agreement being complied with.
So each, each of these projects, and there's four in total. So this is one of them. This is one resolution for this particular project, moving forward. So as this continues to move forward, dependent on the council's determination tonight, this project will then move as a part of the settlement agreement towards plan check, which is basically going through building and other um, pieces. With that is also requirements for an affordable housing agreement to be addressed as well, as well as a number of other conditions that are spelled out within the resolution. All of those need to be followed as a part of this particular project, as a part of the whole s- sum of the settlement agreement.
And if I could add, mayor and council, the four are also approved individually. So of the four, we have cottages, Mallory, Montgomery, and five thousand east Ojai. Cottages was already issued building permits per the settlement. Mallory is in process for a revised site design. Montgomery is tonight, having been recommended for the planning commission by, for approval, and here would subject to council. And five thousand east Ojai was approved by the planning commission, which was its final step last week. So that's, that's where we are in, in the four.
Right. But each of the pieces needs to move through for the whole thing.
The whole thing is, is, all four together build the, build the agreement, and all four need, are moving together and need to move, keep moving, but each approval will be separate.
Yeah, so if the uh, developer decided for some reason not to do one of the projects, not suggesting that that's in the cards, but that would potentially unravel the whole thing.
Yes, it could risk that. And then the developer hasn't suggested they're doing that, but that would risk.
No, 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 right, I just wanna make sure that part of what we're doing here is, is that we're um, we're approving of a multifaceted agreement that doesn't just involve this particular site plan.
Correct.
Um, th- through the mayor? Just a, a quick clarifying question, this is exactly the, the proposal that we unanimously agreed to, is that correct?
Through the settlement agreement?
Yeah.
Is that the question?
That is the question, through the settlement agreement.
Unit count, yes.
Okay, thank you. And everything else was based on coming before us anyway. But nothing has changed fundamentally on unit count or what we agreed to.
In terms of density, no.
Thank you.
Right.
If I could add that both unit count and affordability mix is exactly as was approved in the settlement agreement.
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, actually, I have a question, Lucas, for the community's edification, do you know how much um, the rent is per month? I could have looked this up, um, for median and low income. Uh-oh.
You were ready.
Well, it's a question that came up um, when we brought this forward to planning commission, so we had already had prepped. So for low and moderate is what we're looking at here, I have a sliding scale of one to six, 'cause it really, it, it's, it's dependent on the number of persons per, within the household itself. So as a one-person household, the low income would be at eighteen sixty, one thousand eight hundred and sixty, at the highest end. Okay? For moderate, it would be twenty-five ninety-three point seven-five for one, for one-person household. The moderate, that's, that, that's at the highest level, alright? Sure, it's one, so for low income.
I have that, one thousand eight sixty.
One thousand eight sixty, so the second one is two thousand five hundred and ninety-three point seven-five. And those are numbers from twenty twenty-three, we're awaiting HCD to come out with the numbers for twenty twenty-four, which should be within the coming weeks.
Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I have a um, just a clarifying question, so that's the highest, and so in other words, that's the ceiling.
Correct.
And there is a floor, and it has to do with um, what the total household income is as well at, yes.
Yes, correct.
So this, this is assuming that they make the high end of the percentage of the range for the low or the moderate.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then uh, through the mayor, then we also have the provision that these units are um, let first to Ojai residents that meet the ordinance that we adopted earlier this year.
Correct.
Yeah, the local tenant preference policy will be applied to these projects, as it states.
And, and I guess the other thing that's important for the community to know is that um, and I'll present this as a question. The i- if we did not comply with the RENA numbers that you presented earlier, then we have problems with HCD and our, the potential for a builder's remedy, which means that we lose a lot of the control that we're exercising here tonight.
Yeah, hands are tied pretty tightly without, without those yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that's correct. The builder's remedy, for those not familiar with it, is provisioned state law that allows a city that lacks a substantially compliant housing element, essentially lacks local control over any housing project, which could be approved regardless of any aspect of our local, local ordinances. Having achieved a substantially compliant housing element and an HCD-certified housing element, and with this project and the others, Cabrillo and the other Becker projects collectively having met our RENA, significantly increases our ability to enforce our local ordinances.
Thanks.
I, I don't know if this is addressed in the staff report, but um, is it too early to ask if this project will allow pets?
General state law requires landlords to allow pets in this context, and that will be baked into the affordability agreement, subject to reasonable regulations thereof.
So the answer is yes?
Yes, this project will allow pets.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, well, let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Thank you so much, Lucas, much appreciated. Uh, first we have Bill Miley, we also have a, a card with no name, if anybody. Okay, Star, Star Child, yeah, alright.
I read over the entire administrative report and the drafted resolution, including all of the conditions of approval. As conveyed at the recent planning commission meeting, I again fully support the affordable housing project. I fully appreciate the determination, persistence, and the frustration tolerance of the Becker Group, bringing this positive project to planning completion. It is especially important to be aware, the developer will be subsidizing these affordable units for cost differences between affordable limited rents and the cost of building and maintaining them for the needed time period of fifty-five years. There is no outside federal or state money. I support your council in its final review and the approval of this needed affordable housing project for our city. The need is great, and this is an important step forward, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next we have Star Child.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to speak in favor of the proposed housing development. I think Ojai needs a lot more affordable housing, in fact, I think that the RENA numbers might be a little bit too low. I understand that the last cycle, eight years ago, that our RENA number was closer to three hundred, and now it's fifty-three. And I don't think three hundred units were, were built in that time. I'm not making any noise. Alright, okay, I'm good, okay, alright. Um, I don't think three hundred units were built in that time, in fact, I think that the number was closer to zero than three hundred. And really, um, I think that number is missing a lot of people. I think it's missing uh, some of the workers who are driving into Ojai, who would much rather live here than commute here. Um, I think it's missing the thirty-eight people living out in the parking lot. I think it's missing the people um, at the laundromat, who would much rather be doing um, their clothes, uh, washing their clothes at home and spending time with their families. Um, and because of all that, I think that this council not only should approve this project, but should, should approve even more. Um, I think that if anybody's willing, especially without taxpayer subsidy, to develop a property for our community members to have a place to live, um, maybe even a better place uh, than the one they have now, uh, maybe even a safer place uh, than the old apartment that maybe they have now. Um, I think that this council should approve it. Uh, we don't need subsidies to be able to live here affordably, we just need the council to get out of the way. Um, and so I encourage you to do that, thank you.
Thank you, Star Child. Any comments online?
Yes, mayor, we have one comment online. For Teal Rowe. Teal, you may now unmute your mic.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the plan and development to include the two mature oak trees with the pork chop driveway that you added since the planning commission meeting. Thank you for saving two oaks, I hope they make it through. I didn't say at the planning commission meeting, but I would like it to be on record that um, it is on the Edison station, and if you're a sensitive person like I am, I can feel everything when I walk by down, I walk down there, because everybody was saying they couldn't hear anything, they couldn't feel anything. To me, it vibrates my body on the bike path, so I hope that the city can, um, I don't know what it's called, but protect, protect the city from anything in the future that would bring health, um, health issues to the city in a roundabout way, and to any sensitive person that ends up living there. And I'm concerned about that, and I was concerned about it from day one, I think I do have it on record from years ago. Thank you for listening and all the best, thanks.
Thank you, Teal. That's it?
That's it.
Alright, we'll move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
So I, I walked this property with the developer and his arborist, and I think there was one other person with us uh, over, I think it was over a year ago, yeah. And um, I'm, I too am delighted that he's not only saving the oaks, but some of the other bushes and, and things that are there. And um, my, my memory is that the, the elec- the electric is in the, in the back, and then there's gonna be parking and some bushes, there's some kind of a buffer for the housing, the design is, is really good. I am thrilled to see this coming before us, yeah.
Yep, um, so, thank you so much, Lucas. Uh, so I, you know, I, I shared uh, in Teal's concerns about the, about the e- potential EMF exposure, um, but upon seeing the designs and seeing that there's park, that there's space between where people are going to be sleeping and, and living and, and um, and that, that uh, that area, um, I, I felt good about it. Um, this is a project we've talked a lot about, and I am in support of it. I'm also really uh, happy to see all of the climate measures that the developer put into place. Everything's going to be electrify, uh, electric. Um, it's, you know, all the landscaping's going to be drought tolerant. Uh, you know, I, I was, I was really, really pleased to see, even in the way, it, even in the plans, that, you know, I think, I think it's gonna fit within the look and feel of that community. And so I was, uh, I was prepared to come in skeptical, uh, you know? Uh, and I was really just uh, pleasantly surprised with all of the thought and the care that, that went into um, into developing this, including, as uh, council member Francina mentioned, having the space and the landscaping to hopefully uh, counterbalance some of the uh, the potential im- impacts of the, uh, of the EMFs and of that, of the Edison station. So I am in support of this.
Through the mayor?
Um, I am also in support of it. Uh, I have, I did a little bit of research on EMF and, um, you know, invisible area, areas of energy can be radiation, but there's nothing, um, there's nothing in law that, that stops anyone from building near a station. So we do, it's not, it's not a quantifiable, it's not a, uh, anything that we can point to in any law um, that we could, we could do anything with, not that I would probably be inclined to do that anyway, because I think invisible areas of energy can be very powerful, and I would like to harness that and send it out to some people. Um, that having been said, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that um, that we approve the design review permit, DRP twenty-three oh oh nine, and the planned development permit, PDP twenty-four oh oh one regarding the proposed three-building, fifteen-unit, deed-restricted affordable housing project at three oh four South Montgomery Street.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, any final comments, Mayor Birdman?
Yeah, I got, I have some comments. Um, so I wish that when we were talking about affordable housing, that we were doing better on the rents than we are. But I know that this is the playing field that the state has laid out for us, and um, I actually um, don't wanna view that as a negative, 'cause I think the developer uh, did quite a bit to come um, to the city um, with means, you know, through some of the other projects, as well as this one, um, to uh, achieve a lot of the city's goals for housing. I think, if I recall, this was, this piece of property in the prior agreement was a much more dense project than it, than it's going to be. And uh, I, I think that it's a tremendous improvement um, at what we're looking at and what we're approving. So um, you know, I hope we can, at some point in time, that we can convince the state that, you know, what's, what's affordable across the state is not necessarily achieving the affordability issues that we have in Ojai, but um, I think we've done the best we can do with this project, and everybody should be congratulated for putting it together.
And I would just like to echo my colleague's comments, thank you very much, and um, thank you to our community development director for, and thank you to Mr. Becker and co. for working together and working this out. Looks, it's a great project, and, and of course, we all know that what we really need are units for extremely low, acutely low, and very low income. Um, you know, that's a different discussion that we can talk about later, those are, you know, for people who are living, you know, in the encampment, for example, and um, because those rents still are, are quite high for a lot of our community members. On the other hand, given that um, you know, we're meeting the parameters and um, saving the trees, going all electric, drought-tolerant, wonderful aspects of this project, so seems like we're ready for a roll call.
Comment?
Yeah, yeah.
The, I'm very aware of the rent in O- on the Ojai housing sites, and this would be considered the lowest rent. I can guarantee, if you go look on the site, anything that's under two thousand, you'll have forty applicants. It's like almost un- It's like almost unheard of these days, you know, for housing like this. So, thank you. And of course, we do need other types of, like a tiny home village and all that, different discussion. We need other alternatives for low, low, low income. I agree with that. But the other great thing is the location. People can walk to town in two or three minutes, and that is worth a lot. You can save hundreds of gas and car, you know, you can even live without a car there, which would save someone hundreds of dollars. You know, that's, a car is expensive, expensive. So if you factor that in to the rent, the location makes it even more affordable, to my understanding. Thank you.
And you can have pets, which is important, and pets too. Yeah, we don't think you'll have any trouble filling those units.
And it's in District Four.
Alright. Roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. We have a motion by Councilmember Rule, seconded by Councilmember Lang, to approve item number three as recommended. Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, wonderful. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, we will move on to agenda item number four, update and request to complete effort for temporary encampment at Kent Hall parking lot. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, although I'd like to welcome you to the low-tech part of your meeting. You decide what you can compete with and what you can't compete with as far as PowerPoints, and I just said, you know, I'm not going to compete with Lyndia and Lucas.
There's no competition, no competition.
Especially that bean slide. Yeah, that was something. Okay. That was great. So let's talk about the unhoused encampment here at the Greater Kent Hall parking lot. There's been a lot of talk, not only during tonight, during the public comment, but also last week, of course, with the city's successful receipt of the grant from the state. That's awesome. You know, that's going to be for constructing, you know, the permanent pathway to housing. But what that is not addressing is our immediate need, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. We are still in the process of building out the temporary solution at the Greater Kent Hall parking lot. What does that mean? That means we're following council's direction to get the campers out of the woodland in the creek area, up into the parking lot and the greater parking lot area. So we have been successful. We've really worked hard to quickly mobilize. And as a result of doing that, we expended my spending authority. So I'm here to, and not by an inconsiderable amount, it's fifty thousand plus dollars that we expended, excuse me, my spending authority. But we were following council direction to get people out of the woodland and the creek, let that sensitive area exist, and create a more manageable and sanitary and safe encampment, which is what we have done in the greater parking lot area. We have seventeen tents on platforms currently. We have twelve more that we need to construct. But aside from needing to have you ratify the expenditures that were made over my spending authority, I also need your authorization to go out to bid, because at this point, we've now created a project that's large enough that it requires a formal bid process for what remains, and that's the twelve platforms and tents that are remaining. So that will put us at twenty-nine for the tents and the platforms in this area. That is the number of unhoused that we had camping in the area at the date in December when it was closed to any additional camping, if you're wondering how we arrived at that number. And that is what we anticipate that we will need to address while we work on the long-term solution away from Kent Hall to use our grant proceeds, which is a separate topic, which we'll talk to you about at a different meeting. So, two things I'm asking you for tonight, ratifying the expenditures that were made to build the seventeen tents and platforms, and then getting your authority to go out to bid for the remaining twelve that remain to be constructed. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
So the staff report was prepared before we received the grant. And I was
That's correct.
One of the letters about how the funding goes, but we cannot, can we take, when we get the grant, can we repay ourselves? No.
No, we cannot. And right, but I will tell you, it's an interesting question, and thank you for bringing it up. I believe, and others have said this too, that part of the reason that we were successful in our grant application is because what we have done here with our temporary effort and what we were willing to do to build it out. I think that commitment really showed that Ojai City Council cared and the community cared, and that was probably one of the reasons why we were awarded the entire amount that we asked for. And since you also brought it up, the staff report, I also wanted to give a shout out to Sarah Camilli, who's not here with us tonight, but who wrote a very excellent staff report. She's one of our new additions to our planning department, and she raised her hand and said, hey, I'd like to be involved in this effort. What can I do? And I said, have I got an assignment? So, anyway, thank you, Sarah, for a great staff report.
Any other questions? Alright, we'll move on. Any public, no public comments?
I actually have a question, I'm sorry. So I know that when the first phase of building platforms took place, there was there was quite a bit of what I understood to be volunteer labor, come in and help us build the platform. So with the going out to bid process, are we eliminating that? How do we, how do we encourage the volunteerism that we experienced last go-around and potentially save some of our money for other projects?
It's an excellent question the Mayor Protem asked. I would say it depends. You know, there is not a requirement for the contractor submitting a bid to include volunteer component. We could certainly write that up as recommended to, you know, allow for volunteer participation. That would be a good suggestion. We can add that. I think it's going to depend on who we award the bid to, and I will tell you, I don't know that this is going to be hugely attractive to a large number of contractors. I am aware of a couple that have expressed interest in bidding on it. The other challenge with this second phase of the build-out is this is the part that kind of is going away down the hill from Oak House towards the barn, if you will, or the carriage house, whatever we're calling it. There's a big slope there, and so it really does kind of require some contractor expertise and knowledge. You're essentially building decks down there. But I think it's a great suggestion. We can put in the in the bid, you know, that we're encouraging volunteer participation, and please detail how that might be possible with your response, if you think that's acceptable.
Give a picture of the bids, and it's noted it's somewhat of a different project to have building existing facilities on asphalt versus engineering or designing it and building it on the dirt.
Yeah, and I, by the way, I think a lot of credit should go to those folks who did come out and volunteer and get this project rolling. I understand it was a pretty impressive thing to see.
And it remains today. We still have a number of volunteers who show up every week and contribute. So thank you. It's an excellent point.
We'll move on to public comment. Any comments online? None in the House?
We do not have any public comments online.
Okay, let's move on to discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Jerry.
He's getting some paperwork.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for participating with our community and our values, considering all concerns being addressed. I share the concerns. I am one of the fellows that are disadvantaged with this encampment. I introduced myself before, if you remember me, Jerry William Odell, also known as Tree Bear. I am fully transparent. Go ahead and screen me. I've mentioned that before, and it has been done. You'll find a good record, even a good driving record. I've been completely free from alcohol and drugs for over thirty-three-plus years. Thanksgiving Day will be thirty-four years. That having to do with my good record, yes, there is connecting the dots. Anyhow, getting to the matter at hand presently, what we have here is a proposal. What I wrote, been jotting down here, is all must be considered regarding grant funding, where resources are actually needed regarding eco tiny homes. I'm proposing myself, offering myself up for the tiny homes projects and the grant funding, in case I run out of time to do this extensive proposal. Operational expenses, tools, supplies, resources, materials, listing, locations, all must be considered with genuine consideration and compassion to what has been ignored for too long, T double O, long. Request of proposal from community of Ojai. Reasoning of needs, of concerns, of disabilities and abilities that need to be addressed and recognized and considered. Considering individuals' needs, family, community, requesting overseeing, assigned overseer. Report of observation and evaluation what has transpired since June of twenty twenty-three. And recent developments is, here we go, that there has been denial of individual and neighboring community concerns with integrity in regards to the safety and health and justice for all. So as we pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the American
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, we're going to have to stop now. Thank you. Any comments online?
No, we have no comments online, Mayor.
Okay, let's, oh, hi, Ryan. Come on up.
I'm a little shorter than everyone else. Hello. First off, good to see everyone. I've been a member for the past few years, since twenty twenty. My name is Ryan Bosch. I used to work on planning commission with Lucas Sabre and finance committee with Pam Greer. I just wanted to ask two questions for the city manager, Mr. Harvey. For the homeless funding, the twelve point six million dollars we received recently, which is fantastic. How will the state be donating out that money? And when will we be receiving that money? Will it be in phases, lump sum, and how will we be spending that?
Through the mayor, okay to respond? Okay. So it's our understanding, and we do have a meeting with the state on Friday. We just received the award letter and some details, so we're sorting it out. But it appears that the entire amount will be provided to the city by July. That's how it appears. However, with that, and this is consistent with what the governor said in the news conference where the mayor was representing the city, there are going to be progress measurements along the way. So that's how they're going to ensure that you're complying with what you said you were going to do in your grant application. But we will be providing more details once we know that. Again, we want to have a discussion with the state to make sure we fully understand what's required.
Okay, awesome, because I noticed that that sum of money was the largest awarded in that meeting for that round. And so I just want to make sure that there is a review process in place annually to make sure that we are actively engaging with the spending and making sure it's not being, not misappropriated, but just, you know, lost at the cracks. And then the other thing was, I know that Proposition One with the state passed recently, it was a close vote. But I know what that means for the counties, is that a hundred forty million across the state counties will be taken and go to the state, and that may take away outreach services for homeless people. And so I wonder, what can the city do to increase the homeless outreach efforts, which they did an amazing job for the grant funding, and I'm so proud of them. But what can we do as a city and as a community, make sure that they don't lose any funding or they don't lose any support from the city standpoint? And can we in any way supplement that for the county and start being a leader within the county?
So again, through the mayor, I don't necessarily have a response for that. The only thing I will say is that typically, Health and Human Services is a county function, less a municipal function. We don't have a revenue stream to provide that. But as you're seeing, we are stepping up in this area quite a bit. We're committing some general fund money towards that effort, so of the unhoused, that is, which you could consider, you know, obviously Health and Human Services. But a bigger question that I don't have an answer for at this time. The other thing I'd like to mention is the assistant city manager reminded me just now that within your proposed budget, we are going to be creating a separate account for the funding we're receiving from the state for this effort, for tracking and accountability purposes.
And I'll just add that all of that separate funding is also subject to audit through our annual audit process. So the opportunity for funds to disappear is very limited. It'll all be tracked separately funded and then comply with the grant requirements.
Great questions, Ryan. Thank you. And just so you know, the governor's senior advisor on homelessness is coming next week for a meeting, so.
Is that like a public meeting or where?
That's an operational implementation meeting that'll be closed to the public, but we'll get information out regarding the grant process as it goes.
I think it'd be lovely to have at some point a little public outing with her, because that would increase transparency and allow the public to feel connected.
And we'll definitely report back.
Okay, yeah. I see I have fifty seconds left, so I should wrap this up. Any other questions that I had? Those were really the main points I wanted to hit home today. Oh, with CIP funding for the
We have to just stick to homelessness, this, on this item.
With this issue? Okay, that's perfectly fine. Then, in the last twenty seconds, I'll say, fantastic effort by everyone. I'm so glad to hear we got the funding and that we were actually able to do the outreach efforts. And I think at the end of the day, as long as we're prudent and mindful about the spending, the outreach efforts, and making sure that all the dots are connected, and we take the holistic approach, I think we'll come out pretty good. And I think the
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you. Any comments online?
No, we have no comments online.
Alright, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin? Begin with a motion?
Yeah. Can I just make a motion? Is that okay? That's alright. Make a motion. I'll just read one and two, correct? We ratify expenditures made to date that exceed the city manager's spending authority for the temporary unhoused encampment project, and direct staff to proceed with the formal bidding process for the remaining tent platforms, sheds, and tents, and delegate the power to the city manager to enter into a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with existing budgetary authority. And then we could add a comment about the volunteers. Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any final comments before a roll call?
Yeah, I think that staff, starting with with our interim city manager and picking up with Mr. Harvey and the rest of the staff have done really a tremendous job on taking what was a pretty scary situation and making it more organized and suitable for our unhoused encampment. And looking forward to a good future for this.
Yeah, just thank Ruth Miller, because it was about a year ago that we first met at Love Social Cafe, just under the oak tree. And little did I dream that a year later, here we would be. And also, many thanks to Mark Scott and all the people that, over the period of months, countless people came to the initial meetings, and then the Democratic, the Ojai Valley Democratic Club had a forum and brought dignity moves to Ojai. And I think you went to visit some of And I think you went to visit some of our, you know, everyone was involved in, in some way. So thank you, everyone. Good job.
I'd just like to echo that, those thanks to everyone involved and also Jen Harkey from the county who worked really. And also Rick Rain. We'll give you a hand. Thank you, Rick. You work so hard and do such a great job at supporting people and helping people and maintaining order out of chaos. So thank you. All right. Oh, you ready for a roll call?
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Francina, seconded by council member Ling, I believe you stuck in there, to approve item four as recommended with an amendment to add a volunteer component to the bidding process. Council member Francina.
Yes.
Council member Ling.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Council member Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Right. All right, we will move on to item number five. Extension of professional services agreement with Avantgard Incorporated for additional services relating to phase one of the active transportation program, ATP. We have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, continuing with the low-tech portion of your meeting. I'd actually like to talk about items five and six together, if that's acceptable to the council and, okay, everybody's good with that. They're related. Here we are. This is a follow-up to unanimous vote, council direction back in September of last year, wherein you directed staff to move forward with phases one and two of the ATP project. This tonight, what we're talking about, two components, they only deal with phase one. Just to make it simple, that's the portion, that's the dedicated bike lane in front of Nordoff High School. That, that chunk, the Maricopa Highway section of, of the project. So we need from you two things to follow that direction, to move things forward this evening. One, we need help. We need help in putting this project out to bid. You may ask yourselves, why, why do you need that? You seem to put things out to bid all the time pretty easily. We just did that earlier. Well, that's true. But this is a little different. This is a Caltrans project, has a lot of very specific requirements, a lot of interface with a complicated state agency, a lot of ways that you can run afoul if you don't know what you're doing. So we've identified somebody who knows what they're doing and actually who has been involved with the project for some time, and that's Avantgard. They have been involved on the grant administration side. They raised their hand shortly after I came on board and said, hey, we can see that you do not have the bandwidth or the ability to do this. If you'd like for us to help you with this, we can. And they came forward with what I believe is a very reasonable proposal, not to exceed $45,000 to get us all the way through the bid process. In fact, if council takes direction tonight on the other item that we're going to get to in a second, they're ready to go out to bid tomorrow. In fact, they've already prepared things. It's ready to be put out on, on the websites and, and they're good to go. I should mention, we have a couple important people here with us this evening from the Ventura County Transportation Authority, Peter DeHaan, Heather Miller. They're both here. They've endured the meeting so far. Thank you for doing that. They have been with this, talking about enduring, they've been with this project for a long, long, long time. And I think they want to see for yourselves, for themselves, that this is actually going to possibly move forward this evening. So that's why they're here in person, just to see with their own eyes. But they are also the subject matter experts and they've got the historical background. If there are questions, I would certainly welcome directing to them, because they know a lot more than I do about this project. So anyway, that's, that's part one, which is getting this professional services agreement extended so that we can have somebody on board to do the bid effort, to answer the questions from the contractors, do the advertising, et cetera. Okay. The second part is actually giving us the authorization to go out to bid itself. That's a separate action. It's a formal action. You need to give us that authority so that we can go out to bid. And you can see with this item, well, a couple of things. Going back to the prior item, I, I received a little bit of criticism from the public and it was totally merited. You know, there, where's all the details about this project? Well, I included a hyperlink in agenda item number five to the very detailed staff report that interim city manager Mark Scott wrote back in September. So if you click on that hyperlink, you know, on the digital copy, of course, it takes you back to the staff report that goes through the various funding sources, the grants, the timeline, the scope, you know, the, the impediments, et cetera, et cetera. So that's there. Jumping forward now to the actual request for the authorization to go out to bid. The only, I think, item that I'd like to call you, call your attention to on that is, is the attachment, which shows you the scope of the project. You can see that from folding it out. It's the, it's the area in between the arrows, you know, the end construction, the begin construction. You can see this is the phase one of the ATP project, the Maricopa Highway section, the, the Nordoff High School section, if you will, the dedicated bike lanes. That is the area that we're talking about. If this does go out to bid tomorrow, as we hope it, it will, we expect to receive a number of bids and come back to you before the end of June with, with a recommended selection, so that we can be in compliance with the grant, receive the monies. And then construction can hopefully begin in, you know, roughly in the July-ish timeframe with the thought that this project could be finished in the fall. That's kind of a rough, now, of course, there could be things that happen that move that around a little bit, but that's a really rough potential timeline. So if, again, if you have questions, we've got the experts here and also Lindy has endured and stuck around too. Thank you, Lindy. And we'd be happy to answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
Well, the, the question that the public seems to repeatedly have, in spite of all our assurance, they want to know if there will be emergency vehicle and fire access. So maybe this is a good time.
Okay, great. So, so let's just jump into that right away. So I have a witness next to me. It's the city attorney. Chief Parker was just here earlier. He had, he had to leave, but we decided to ambush him with that question. Once again, we'd already asked of him again, but he assured us that yes, Ventura County Fire actually drove this, this location to prove that it actually was feasible. On top of that, this is a Caltrans approved design, which it would never make it through the Caltrans design approval if it didn't appropriately allow for emergency vehicle access.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah. So we had a prior meeting and there's, I think there's been more than one, but we kind of went through the, the site plan, the striping and everything in kind of probably too much detail. But all of those things that we adopted then are incorporated into what's going out to bid now.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and, and thank you, sorry, through the mayor. So right, this is, as, as the mayor pro tem is pointing out, this is not the time to revisit the design that's happened. You've given direction. You've said move forward, put it out to bid. Those days are, are long gone.
Yes.
But, you know, the concerns that were brought up that could be incorporated, that were allowed by Caltrans are baked into this.
My, this looks great, wonderful. My one question, if construction's going to begin in, in July, when school goes back to session end of August? Are there, just, I'm just concerned about that. Are there considerations being?
This will all have to be addressed as part of the construction management portion of the, of the project. So when the bid's awarded, we'll be better able to answer some of these questions.
Okay.
I'm just going, so I know you clarified about the fire and the safety, but I just wanted, just double check that, that, that you talked with the chief also about the fire safe council's intention to have Nordoff as a, as a fire shelter or as an emergency shelter?
Chief Parker, thank you, through, through the mayor. Chief Parker said they have absolutely zero safety concerns about this location with anything going on around there. They felt 100% confident and were supportive of the project.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to public comment. No one in the house? Anybody online?
We have one comment online, Mayor. Renee, you may unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased that you have a project manager hired to do this project. And I know that the one variable that was holding a lot of things up was the right-of-way access for the easements along Maricopa Highway. And I'm just wondering what the status of those projects are and if all of that has been resolved. I would love to hear that that's all been resolved and everything can move ahead according to plans. But I know that there were some property owners who are holding out and causing litigation to possibly happen. I'd just love to hear some good news if that is not the case. Thank you.
Mayor and council, all right-of-way issues have been solved for phase one, which is the phase we're discussing now.
Great. Thank you.
That's good news.
Indeed?
Yeah.
All right, well, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I think we should just make a vote.
Okay, this is.
Do, I guess I didn't want to speak, right?
No, no cards.
Doesn't seem like there's anything we could say that, given where things are going.
Looking good. You want to make a motion?
Yes. I'll just add, these kind of projects are too much to my delight. They're happening all over Ventura County. Because I'm on the Ventura County Transportation Commission, so I'm aware of that. So I will, the first motion will, I'll just make, do you want the whole thing, right? Both, both, okay. I will, I make a motion to authorize the approval of an extension to the professional services agreement with Avantgard Incorporated for additional services relating to the bid phase for phase one of the active transportation project, ATP, in an amount not to exceed $45,000. Active transportation program. Did I say that? Yes.
Yes.
And then, should I make the second one or somebody else?
One motion would be sufficient. Put them all together.
Okay. So then I'll just read those three recommendations under item six. I author, I make a motion to authorize staff to solicit competitive bids and publish a notice inviting sealed bids for Maricopa Highway Active Transportation Project. Two, accept the determination by Caltrans that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA. And three, approve the plans and specifications for the Maricopa Highway ATP project.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any final comments before roll call?
Okay, one final comment, and that is, I know that this is a really, this is a project that has mixed reviews in, among our community. And, and I, I do feel like moving forward with this, you know, with the request to solicit some help and to, to begin the construction, I, I think that this is going to ensure that we have a project that we're happy with at the end. And so I just want to let all the people who have reached out to me personally with concerns about the project know that, that, that your concerns are heard, they're, they're being considered as we move forward with phase one.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment in that. My support is largely because we're just talking about phase one. I would love to see when we get to phase two, that we're just looking at attaching this pathway to the county's recreation trail. And that it seems like the Caltrans is taking care of a bunch of things that were contemplated in terms of the handicap access at streets downtown Ojai. So I, I hope that we're not going to go, you know, too extensive in phase two, if at all. And I think that it's a really good move that we're making, because there were some real serious safety concerns and actually some lives lost. And we're mitigating the danger of bicyclists and students at Nordoff getting to and from school.
It's, it's super exciting to get the bike trail off the road and separate cyclists and cars. That's the number one thing. So thank you very much for being here. Ready for a roll call?
We have a motion by council member Francina, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Whitman, to approve items five and six as recommended. Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Council member Ling.
Yes.
Council member Rule.
Yes.
Council member Francina. Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for coming.
Do you have any idea when we're going to be getting to phase two, or is it too soon to ask?
Way too soon to ask, but we will, when we finish up phase one, we will come back to you and give you an accounting of what happened and then talk about getting direction for phase two.
Okay, thank you.
Promise.
Well, that was amazing, council. We got through a lot of items. And I did pull item I from the consent calendar, so we actually have time, surprise, surprise. This is the short-term rental ordinance. And I just wanted to look at one phrase. So if you could look at page seven of nine in the ordinance, if we can all find that. Seven of nine.
Page seven.
Of the, of the, of the ordinance itself.
So attachment A, page seven?
Yep. Item G, and it's a section four dash two, four point oh five penalties and enforcement subsection G. And the reason I wanted to discuss this tonight, because I was looking, I was actually watched the last meeting's video and, and I confirmed that Mr. Summers made a statement that addressed the concerns raised about frivolous lawsuits. So I'm going to quote you. That's okay? You said, "I await policy direction, but I would note that the last sentence of the present language in part is protection against a frivolous or meritless lawsuit in that a defendant who was subjected to a suit that the court found frivolous and lacks any merit would recover attorney's fees." So this, this may mean realize that the, that notification rather than city consent is adequate. So I would suggest that in the first sentence of item G, it'd be modified to read, "Any agreed person or entity who notifies the city a minimum of five days prior may bring a civil suit in an appropriate state or federal court to enforce any violation of this chapter." So, and because requiring a third party who's going to file a lawsuit to notify the city of their intention means that the city would be informed and then can choose to intervene if it's necessary. And, and one of the reasons I think this is important is because it would save the city considerable staff time to review the case and provide consent. And as Mr. Summers said, the last sentence of this subsection protects defendants from frivolous lawsuits. So I'm bringing that to council to discuss and think about. Yep.
I'm confused. So you want to not require, you want to change the requirement that the city investigate and validate? Is that, I, I'm confused.
I'm, I'm suggesting that, that someone notifies the city. If, if a person wants to, would notify the city a minimum of five days before bringing a civil suit. So, and what I'm saying is that notification is enough rather than city consent. And the city, of course, because it's notified, can always intervene. I think that last sentence, though, protects us from any frivolous lawsuit.
So am I understanding that you want to remove the, you want to remove the city as being a mediating or agreeing? I mean, in other words, what we said was.
That we would have, that the, that, that whoever had a claim would apply to the city to look at it and to assess it prior to a suit. And you want to take that away? Is that correct?
I'm suggesting that the, the person, the agreed person or entity would notify the city?
But the city would not investigate?
No, the city can also always choose to intervene. I think, though, as Mr. Summers said, you know, the last lang, the last sentence is protection from a frivolous lawsuit.
So back to you, a discussion, if we can have one. I don't understand then why you want to take that out if they're already protected. I, I think, I, I think the idea that this, that this is too mu- I, I think, I, I think the idea that this, that this is too much for the city, given that the city is the, the city is the enforcement entity. And I think that having a analysis by the city, whether or not there was an infringement of the ordinance, makes perfect sense. I think it will stop a frivolous lawsuit. If the city were to deem this lawsuit to be frivolous prior to it going to court, that would save everybody. I mean, what, the, the point of this was to stop, I mean, you have bad tenants, you have bad landlords, but it was really to stop bad actors from using this. I think the best way to stop bad actors from moving forward is to have a determination by the city. And then if, if the people decide to move forward, even with a determination by the city that this wasn't a violation, so be it. But I, I think it would relieve a lot of the tension around the situation to have the enforcement body actually do an analysis. I think it makes a huge amount of sense, honestly, to have the enforcement entity, the city, who wrote the ordinance, who enforces the ordinance, to actually weigh in as to whether or not this is a violation. I, I, I don't see the reason for taking that out, honestly.
Councilmember Lang?
I just have a couple of clarifying questions. First of all, is there, for the city attorney, if I may, is there a statute of limitations for presenting these kinds? If, if, if a, if a neighbor wanted to present a case against another neighbor for, you know, for going against the ordinance or having a short, a short-term rental, is there a statute of limitations that would, that would relate to the timing of the city's involvement and, and, and what we're talking about here?
I mean, typically it'd be a three-year statute for a neighbor to follow suit, challenging a violation of a statute like this. So that's a three-year window from the day of the violation for the neighbor to file suit. The ordinance doesn't impose a requirement on the city to give that decision on consent or not consent. The city staff would, of course, be reasonable in the amount of time they take to review the suit. The council could put a, a time constraint on the city consent line, if it's so desired. But yeah, the neighbors have three years to follow suit.
Thank you. What is the, can I ask another question? What is the typical, and maybe this is for staff? What it would be the, I know that our staff is limited. What would the typical turnaround time be for responding to someone who is a neighbor who's raising a concern around another, about another neighbor?
We fairly quickly investigate short-term rental violations, are a priority for the city's enforcement team. We obviously don't have this kind of situation as of yet, because this is a new provision, where it's the neighbors bringing the complaints, on the way to court, rather. Right now, the neighbor brings a complaint, we investigate those fairly quickly, and then take enforcement action as appropriate, as, as we find on a fairly quick basis.
So if the, I mean, so with what I'm understanding, your recommendation is, it's to put a time limit on the city's involvement, is that, is that correct?
Yes, to move things forward faster and it would take less staff time. It just would be, make everything easier, more streamlined.
So, can, I just have a clarifying-
Mayor Pro Tem?
Sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay, you can, maybe we'll have the same question, go ahead.
Well, I, I was just going to ask if you could repeat. So my understanding is you want to take out the words "with city consent" and replace them with-
A minimum of five days. Any agreed person or entity who notifies the city a minimum of five days prior may bring a civil suit in appropriate state or federal court. That is what I'm suggesting.
I, I would like to know what the, our city attorney and our city manager think of changing. I, I understand what's, I, I'm a little bit nervous about anything that says five days. Because who knows what might be going on to, to prevent that. I'd like to know your, your opinion of changing G, and what are the pros and cons?
Sure, it's a straight policy question, so I'm going to decline to give a, a hard recommendation, but a little on pros and cons. If the city consent is required, then that, that blocks straight frivolous lawsuits, because the city would not consent to those. The con, of course, is that it adds additional burden on staff, and it adds an additional requirement to review presumably a draft complaint, to review it, investigate it, come to some conclusions about whether or not lawsuit makes sense, and then consent to that, that adds additional staff time, that adds additional attorney time, that adds additional process, when if the idea is to allow private enforcement, the city needn't do anything, someone else could enforce it. And if the city saw the, saw the case as a problem, we would enforce it on our own. Presumably, the city would be enforcing already, so that's the, the, the other side of that. And then on switching it for notification instead, if it's notification, then the city's not gatekeeping the right of the residents to go to court, which is one of more, our more fundamental, fundamental rights. So we're not gatekeeping that, which would be something to consider as well. Manager?
So that's a thorough legal explanation, let me just, let me just give you some very plain, straight talk. This is a policy decision, you can decide whatever you want, and we're going to follow your direction, because that's what we do. From an operational perspective, this clause could go away and it wouldn't impact what we're doing on the operations side one bit. Does not help us, does not, it's not a tool in the toolkit that we need or necessarily want. So i- it's a policy decision, if you want to have that in there, great. But it's not going to help us turn the tide as far as enforcement of short-term rentals. You already did that when you gave us an additional resource that we're going to come back and give you some suggestions on. That's going to turn the tide, that's going to be the big item, as well as the provisions for penalties and ill-gotten gains that you gave us. That's the huge part. This, it's a policy decision, if you want it, fine, it doesn't help us from an operations side.
And the much higher fines, too, that is also a key piece.
Right, through the mayor?
Yep.
So the reason that we decided on this was to really stop neighbors from going after neighbors for, for putting the weight, you know, tipping the scales towards people who had money for lawsuits. You know, basically, we're, we're allowing an immense amount of power for someone to go after a neighbor. And, and this, the, the point of, of the clause was to sort of put some sort of gatekeeper on that. Now, as far as staff time, we appropriated or are going to appropriate a staff member for enforcement. So, you know, as far as like burdening staff, you know, that will be the job of that partic- I mean, that particular person that we agreed to hire. The other thing is, this doesn't have to do with neighbor to neighbor. I could live in Massachusetts, you know, and decide that I wanted to cause some trouble to somebody I wanted to cause trouble to. I mean, this isn't, so it could be neighbor to neighbor, but it is so broad, and it is, it is so, you know, potentially punitive. And as, like I say, as someone who is sitting a year and a half into a frivolous lawsuit, I would not wish that on anybody. And it, this allows neighbors who are angry at each other, it allows people to live in different cities who are angry at people, to move forward at will. So if I'm an attorney, if I have a son who's an attorney, if I have money, it puts a whole new advantage to me. And the one thing that stops it is an analysis by the enforcement agency. And we're hiring somebody for enforcement. It only make, for me, it only makes sense that we also protect people against bad actors. And it isn't a huge protection, you know, it isn't a huge protection, it's just an analysis that would stop frivolous lawsuits. You know, people who engage in lawfare engage in lawfare. And it puts people who are the recipients of lawfare at a terrible, terrible disadvantage. So, and, and if, I don't even know what a five-day notice means. So I send a five-day notice to Lucas, and I say, "I'm going to do this." And if I don't send a five-day notice, I, I don't even know what that means, really. So, anyway, that's really all I have to say on that matter, really. I, we need to protect people, it doesn't cause any detrimental effect to the people who want to sue, you know, rightly, or who want, you know, who have a, a real case. It doesn't in any way affect their ability to do that, but at the same time, it does protect someone who is potentially becoming a victim of lawfare.
Oh, Councilmember Lang?
Yeah, if I, if I could speak exactly, because I, I, I'm, I'm with you. But this line right here, "Should defendants in suit prevail, they may, they may not recover attorney's fees or costs unless reviewing court of compet-" So basically, this protects, this, this is that, that, what's the word I'm trying to use? This is the, the protection that, that a, that a person would have. So if, if, if someone, if you're, if, if someone from Massachusetts sues you for suspecting that you have a, a short-term rental or brings a suit just out of animosity, you can, that, that individual could, could prove that they are not having a short-term rental and therefore could recover all the costs. So, so if we add, so if we add the time limit, like some kind of time limit for the city to respond, that, that takes away the, I mean, a lot of, a lot of attorneys who are going to be presenting these cases are public interest attorneys, who are probably working on contingency for not a lot of money. I mean, as you've, as you've, this is, there, there's, I'm thinking about a neighbor who is next to a party house, and it's definitely a short terminal, and, you know, that person might not have a lot of resources to go after somebody or might not even know about the legal ramifications or the statute of limitations. So I think the protection works both ways. But, but this, this clause right here is that protection for, for those, to avoid frivolous lawsuits.
Through the mayor?
Well, let's take turns, because we still, okay.
Yeah, but I, I do have a specific response to that. Judges decide how much attorneys get. The judge can decide that a reasonable fee is half of what it costs. The judge can decide that a reasonable fee is twenty-five percent of what it costs. So there is nothing that requires a judge to agree to a hundred percent of what it costs.
I do see your card start, we, we already, you have to get the card in before, we already started discussion? Yep. Well, there was no, there were no cards. Shall we?
Mayor and Council, if there's just one, you could certainly take it, it's not unreasonable. But I would note, for those wondering, for the consent items like this that are pulled off consent, we take the consent card at the beginning of consent, no cards were submitted on consent. So, no card was submitted, but it's reasonable to take one comment.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, I just had a thought about the staff time issues. So it seems like there are two options. So one is that the, the city would have to consent to any lawsuit, that staff would have to review the brief and then decide whether they consent. The other option is that five days before the lawsuit, the attorneys would present the brief to staff, and then staff would presumably review the lawsuit and decide whether to allow it through. So it's the same amount of staff time, the only difference is now the staff has to do it in five days instead of a reasonable amount of time. It seems like it's more a burden for staff, that's all, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, so I actually practice in an area of law that has a provision providing for attorney's fees. And there's a couple of things that need to be pointed out. So this would be what is considered to be a statutory cause of action if it was brought as a lawsuit. And under the rules of pleading, to bring a statutory cause of action, you have to state every fact your claim is based upon with factual specificity. So you can't just file a lawsuit and say, "This person was bad, this person violated the stat-" violated our ordinance, it would have to say, "This person violated the ordinance in this manner," and give specification of dates and times and things that would then be potentially subject to proof. And the, you know, provision I'm thinking of has no type of a check and balance. It's, other than the judge is going to read and determine whether a, you know, factual specificity has been provided in the complaint. If it hasn't been provided, the lawsuit goes away. So I, I agree with the mayor that the provision, the, the, the final sentence, agree with Councilmember Lang, that the final sentence, which says that a reviewing court can decide that the lawsuit was frivolous and thereby award attorney's fees, is going to deter any attorney from taking a lawsuit on a flyer. I think a, an attorney is going to only want to take on a meritorious lawsuit, because that's the only way they're going to get compensated. And so I think the, the removal of this consent provision gets the city out of potentially becoming embroiled, puts the burden on the person who brings the lawsuit to come up with the facts. And if they don't come up with the facts, they potentially get, you know, penalized with the award of attorney's fees. And I think that's adequate protection. So I, if you're going to put, I don't think, I would just strike the "with city consent" language and say, "Any aggrieved person." So, this is another thing, you know, somebody from some other state can't claim that they're an aggrieved person for a short-term rental violation in Ojai. You'd have to show that you are aggrieved, meaning you have a stake, you're somehow being impacted by the fact that the violation is taking place. So, I mean, I would suggest simply striking the language with city consent and saying, "Any aggrieved person or entity may bring a civil suit in an appropriate state or court." And that's exactly how the statute that I work with on a regular basis reads.
Would you like to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we strike the words from section four, dash twenty-four, dot oh-five, subdivision G. We strike the words "with city consent."
And otherwise adopt the ordinance?
And otherwise, and otherwise adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Can I, can I ask a question? Was your first comment adding the time limit to that? Was your fir- so Mayor Pro Tem Whitman's motion is to strike that altogether, and your original proposal was to add a time limit to it?
A minimum of five days prior.
If they notify the, notify, notifies the city five days prior to bringing the suit.
Is there a second for that motion? Well, I will, I will second it. And, and I just want to bring our attention one more time to the sentence that Mr. Summers said at the last meeting. The last sentence, he's referring to the last sentence in subsection G of the present language in part is protection against a frivolous or meritless lawsuit in that a defendant who was subjected to a suit that the court found frivolous and lacks any merit would recover attorney's fees. So we have a, we have a motion-
So we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second? Are we ready for a roll call?
No, I have a couple of responses. City attorney, who was the guy that we were in a lawsuit with for a year, who was an attorney who claimed that there was an illegal split lot?
That would be Mr. Tully.
Mr. Tully. And Mr. Tully was able to do that and spent $80,000, and cost the city $80,000, because he was a lawyer. And from what I understood, he never had a case. But it didn't matter, because he was aggrieved and he was a lawyer. And he just kept it going on and on, because he could, right? And he was mad.
Fought a lawsuit, we got it killed on demur after a couple of rounds of briefing. The trial court agreed with us and dismissed the case, and he did an appeal.
Correct. And from what I understood from the city manager at the time, James Vega, that it cost us about $80,000. It was ongoing.
I forget the exact price tag.
Yeah, well, that's what he said. It was about $80,000. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, plus our time, for something that had no merit. I mean, according to, to Mr. Vega, okay?
That is the city's position, that case had no merit.
Yeah, that was the city's position, but yet, we had no choice. And that is the same situation that I am just trying to stop. I'm not saying that everybody is that way. I'm saying that for this, which is highly, highly punitive, we've done everything we can possibly do to make someone who has an illegal short-term rental feel the pain. But the flip side of that is, is that someone can make someone else feel that pain because they want to. And as far as going to court, once again, yes, you can go to court, and yes, it can be thrown out of court. But it was nine months before my court case came in front. We're talking, it just, you don't just file a case and you go the next day and the judge says, "Okay, this is frivolous, we're gonna give you all your money." It's motion after motion, expense after expense, appeal after appeal. Why wouldn't we put in some sort of protection for our residents who might be on the receiving end? It costs us nothing, we're hiring an enforcement officer. I, I just, I don't see the downside of protecting people who might be on the receiving end of someone who was angry. Like, Mr. Tully was angry, and he was an attorney. And he just kept going. He didn't have to pay any money. He just kept going.
I would note, as to the Tully lawsuit, that statute does not have a frivolous lawsuit result in attorney's fees for the defendant. City never gets attorney's fees.
Right, the city, that's, that's not my point. My point, that's not really my point. My point is, is that it didn't cost him anything. No one was gonna get, I mean, the-
He spent his time, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, anyway. You know, in the end, it's gonna be a policy decision of the council, but I would, I would hope that we would put up some sort of protection against a bad actor. And it's not a big protection, for gosh sakes. It's that, it doesn't even have to be that needs consent. It could just be an analysis by the office. You know, that would carry a huge amount of weight. If it just went in and the enforcement officer said, "We don't see it," that is a huge deterrent. And it doesn't have to be, you read the brief. It doesn't, you know, it's just like if someone filed a complaint, and you looked at it and you said, "I don't see it." That would end the problem right there, because no one's gonna go to court when the enforcement officer has said, "I don't see it."
Councilmember Lang?
Yeah, so now you're, you're bringing up a bigger issue. And that is, if we have the, the part here about the city consent, could we be, could we be brought into the lawsuit? So, say we have someone who, like the previous, you know, the case that you just mentioned, if the, if the city council is involved in giving consent at all, would that make us, and we have two neighbors against each other, and one is very litigious, and law, and using lawfare, could then we be sued? Or could we, what, what, what would that, is there a risk?
I think our subtracting city consent doesn't necessarily increase or decrease the risk of the city being drawn on the lawsuit. I think the risk is always there. Because we're always at risk, because we're the enforcement agency. So, the, the Tully example is, is not a great example on that front, because that case is a directly, he was challenging a city action. He had to sue the city. Here, the plaintiff could choose to sue just the neighbor, they could choose to sue the neighbor and the city. The city can't be held liable for its enforcement decisions. We have absolute immunity, on prosecutorial immunity, to decide when to enforce and when not to enforce. So that case we would kick quickly, although as noted, we rarely get defense fees. So we might see, so the city consent piece doesn't really affect that risk, that risk is always there.
Mayor Protem?
But if the city engages in a consent or a refusal of consent, city can be dragged into court on a writ of mandate to challenge the decision either to consent or not consent, which means that the city would then incur attorney's fees based upon the consent.
Yeah, somebody could challenge, could always sue to challenge a refusal, refusal to consent and argue that that was somehow lacking the adequate basis in law. There is that risk, yes, that's true.
Through the mayor?
I'm gonna make a comment. I, I would argue that the language is already in subsection G, the protection against a frivolous lawsuit, in the last sentence. And once again, the reasoning here is to remove roadblocks to lessen the demand on staff time and just to make things easier. So we do have a motion and a second, so let's go ahead.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
I'm gonna finish my sentence. After we have final comments, we will have the roll call. So, Councilmember Rule?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we don't look for consent to further the lawsuit, but that it, we require, or we require an analysis of enforcement by the enforcement officer whom we have, we are hiring for this. We are planning on, you know, I, I, we're planning to extend our staff to deal with enforcement. So, I never really assumed that we would look at someone who, that we would actually read the briefs. I'm just saying that an analysis by the city staff of the complaint would be in order. And once again, I will point out that going to court, the simple act of going to court regardless of the findings, is a burden, and it is a stressful operation, maybe not for a lawyer, but for neighbors who are aggrieved. It is not just simply you show up to court and the judge finds in your favor. That is not the experience of the normal person who is being sued. Believe me.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Councilmember Rule, to clarify the substitute motion?
Yeah, so I-
It's adopt the ordinance.
It's adopt the ordinance with no, what I want is, I want the, the people who want to sue to come, not that you need permission to move forward, but that you need an analysis by the city enforcement officer. So maybe you have to bring it to the city first. I just want, I just want someone impartial to be able to give an evaluation of whether or not this suit is legitimate. Someone whose job it is to enforce this, which would be the community development. In the end, it's gonna be what it's gonna be, but
Is there a, a second for this mo-, wait, just, just a, is there a second for that motion? Okay, no, okay. All right, we're gonna go back to the fir-, we have a motion on the table, yep.
So, if, if we had, if, if, if our mayor had not brought up item G, we would've just passed it, right? Until we had this, this, we didn't see anything wrong with that item. It was approved by our city attorney, correct? I, I mean-
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, you, 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 you wrote, you wrote all this out.
I wrote this reflecting the council's policy choices at the last meeting. Had the mayor not pulled it from consent, it would've been approved with the rest of the consent calendar, exactly as approved at the last meeting. Of course, the mayor raised a policy question.
Okay, okay.
And we need a policy direction.
And so, the first motion, the one that we're, if, if I don't second Councilmember Rule's substitute motion, is simply to remove "with city consent," that's all. There was no, nothing about five days, correct?
Correct.
And then we were told that it actually doesn't make any difference whether we keep that wording in or not, if I understood what you said.
It makes a lot of difference.
No, I, I-
It removes the consent part.
There, there is a significant difference. City consent or not consent. If the city consent is required for a lawsuit to go forward, then an aggrieved person cannot go to court without the city consenting.
Okay, okay.
So that's the difference. It's whether or not the city is a gatekeeper on the way to court, or whether or not the city is a protection for people who would be the defendants. The two ways to look at it. The alternative language proposed by Mayor Protem is to delete the city consent, so an aggrieved person can file a lawsuit. The other, third option we're up to now, language by Councilmember Rule would be not city consent, but require before you go to court, you have to present the complaint to the city. City produces an analysis of it, and that analysis has to be filed together with the complaint to court. But the person can go to court on their own without city consent. So in that regard, they collapse back to the same. The difference is whether the city analysis is included or not included, but still not gatekeeping the way to court. And the original language would require city consent before it can go to court.
Okay, well, we, we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. I think it's time to call the question and have a roll call.
I do have just one question. Is, to the mayor, is your concern that it is going to cause city staff time? Is, is that your concern?
As I said, I think that we have in this ordinance, language, and, you know, I'm quoting Mr. Summers, that we are protecting people from a frivolous lawsuit. And so I think it's to save staff time and to streamline it. So, we, let's go ahead and vote, and we can, it's a policy question.
I still, yeah, I still have one comment here. A frivolous lawsuit, getting the determination of a frivolous lawsuit takes a lot of time and a lot of money, and you may not get it all back. That is very true. And that is very true. It's not just a frivolous lawsuit and you don't ever make it to court. That isn't what happens. So, I just want people to realize that as you vote. It's not, it's huge. What is wrong with the staff making a determination?
Okay, a roll call on Councilmember Rule's motion, please.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Rule and a second by Councilmember Francina. A sub-suit motion, apologies, that the city not require, or pass the motion as recommended, or pass the, adopt the ordinance as recommended, but instead of requiring city consent, instead include a clause that the city staff conduct an analysis in any of these relevant cases.
So, I, I, I'm more comfortable with the wording "city staff" than a specific staff. It's gonna be the appropriate city staff, right?
Yeah, leave it at city staff, it'll be assigned as needed.
And so, to my consent and analysis, consent would include analysis. I, I'm happy to use the word "analysis," so.
Okay, a roll call? Oh, Councilmember Lang?
I just, I think I, I'm just, I'm having a difficult time knowing how that process, how that process would work. If you can present a case, no, no matter what, like, so if, if, if there's no barrier to presenting a case, but we need to have staff provide an analysis, and, but that's not a gatekeeper, I think there's like some confusion just in, in how, so I'm-
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to answer that, if I could, through the mayor. So, if you are going to file a lawsuit, you first have to come and make your case before an enforcement officer that we have actually going to hire to do this. So the staff argument, to me, just kind of dissolves, because we're hiring someone to do all of this new enforcement. So this would just be a very small added portion of what that enforcement officer that we've agreed to hire. You would just simply bring, you would have to file with the city of, a, a violation. You would have to complain, you would have to do a code enforcement violation first. And the city would have to actually look at that first and make a determination. And I'm not saying that would stop you from going ahead. If you wanted to file that lawsuit, go ahead. It's not, the, the city is not a gatekeeper stopping, in my mind, stopping the lawsuit, right? But it is, you need to come in and get a determination and put that in, or give it to the defendant. You know, I mean, however that works. It's just, that to me is the cleanest, simplest, most streamlined way to keep lawfare under control, is you come in and you get a determination. And you, you know, the code enforcement, you've got it, you've got it, who's making the complaint? Who are they complaining against? Both parties get the, the findings. And so if you choose to move forward, right, and it, and it validates, you know, code enforcement says, "We didn't see anything here," then the defendant has something that they can use, right? And, and it will also give pause to someone who might be inclined to do lawfare, because it doesn't really cost them anything. For whatever reason that might be, they have more money, it doesn't matter to them, they have, they're an attorney, their children, you know, they have friends that are attorneys. You know, I, I just don't see what the downside of that is. It's, we're hiring the person to do enforcement. Why is it only enforcement to penalize? Why isn't it also enforcement to protect?
I'm gonna call the question, could we have the roll call, please? Well, thank you.
That's, that's how I see it.
Councilmember Lang?
No.
Mayor Styx?
No.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, we will go back to the original motion? Do you mind repeating that?
Yes, so we had a motion by Mayor Protem Whitman, seconded by Mayor Styx, to adopt the ordinance as recommended with an amendment to section four dash twenty-four dot oh-five subje-, subsection G, to strike the words "with city consent."
Roll call?
Councilmember Francina? Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
No.
Motion passes three, two.
Thank you. All right, we will go on to the council members' reports. Anyone have anything to report? Anyone? Well, I would like to say, congratulations to Cretona for the centennial celebration. It was a really wonderful weekend, a great turnout, and what a great resource, and to our community, and such a beautiful place. So, I encourage everybody to go up there and take advantage of their classes and their beautiful surroundings. Also, I saw deer at the art center. So congratulations to the art center for a great production, very weird and wonderful. We're seeing. And also, the, the, the World Mus-, the World Dance Festival, I wasn't there because I was seeing deer, but I heard it was a really spectacular and sold-out crowd, so congratulations to them. Anybody else?
I don't need to repeat here things that I've discussed with you, right?
Okay, city managers' report?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all for productive, very productive meeting, and we are adjourned.